It is now 6:00 PM and I am going to call the City of Iowa City formal meeting for September 7th, 2021 to order. Roll call please.
Burgess.
Here.
Ms.
Here.
Sollee.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, well, welcome again to everyone in the audience and everyone that is listening by either any of the social media outlets. Our first item is Item 2A, is Item 2, which are Proclamations. And the first one is 2A, which is Interna-- I'm sorry, Iowa City Welcoming Week. Whereas this week, we celebrate Welcoming Week as a way of creating home together with communities around the world. Welcoming Week is bringing, is about bringing neighbors together across lines of differences to build relationships and work together on shared goals. And whereas Iowa City is home to people of all backgrounds, including those who were not born in Iowa City, but now call it home, and we recognize the importance of ensuring that all community members feel safe, secure, and welcome. And whereas recent events have highlighted the historic and current impacts of individual institutional and systemic racism that result in harmful disparities in education, employment, income, housing, criminal justice, and quality of life, as well as a sense of belonging. And whereas our community, like others across the nation, has structures, systems, and policies that contribute to injustice, racial inequality, and discriminatory treatment against community members who were born in another country, are Black Indigenous, other people of color, LGBTQ, and other identities. And whereas to capitalize on diversity as a nice set, our community must strive to create a culture and policies that ensure everyone can belong and thrive by addressing disparities, countering hate, understanding history, and helping neighbors come together. And now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 10th through 19th, 2021 to be Iowa City Welcoming Week and invite the community to engage in opportunities during Iowa City Welcoming Week and beyond to learn, connect across differences, take joint action to achieve a welcoming, equitable, and inclusive community, and reaffirm their commitment to continue to examine and adopt programs, policies, and practices that improve our efforts towards achieving equity for all now and in the future. And receiving this is Jason Glass from the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Teague. I am Jason Glass, the Vice Chair of the Human Rights Commission. I'm happy to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Human Rights Commission and Iowa City. I've accepted several proclamations from the Human Rights Commission, and they're always an honor. This one in particular is close to my heart. I was, had the opportunity and the privilege to lead a nonprofit several years ago called Professional and Technical Diversity Network, which was in Iowa City and Cedar Rapids. And we created the corridor welcome receptions, which were later taken on by the respective chambers in each organization. So, and that, the purpose of those was to bring all kinds of organizations together that represented different parts of the community in order to welcome people who were new to this community and to welcome a more diverse workforce. And so I got to see firsthand just the magic of a simple welcome and a simple getting people together who may not always, who may not otherwise see each other or speak to each other, and how that increases community and builds a sense of belonging to those that are new to our community. So that was a really special privilege, as is accepting this proclamation. And though we certainly have work to do in Iowa City, I do believe that we are a very welcoming community and have a lot of opportunities like that to bring people together through our festivals and Summer of the Arts and so many different things. So I, I hope that all of us take advantage of the Welcoming Week activities and if it's just a smaller thing as find somebody that you may not otherwise met and thank them or welcome them to Iowa City. So thanks again for highlighting the importance of welcoming all peoples to our community and for this proclamation. Thanks.
Great. And I have a proclamation to give to you.
Jason.
Jason. I'll hand this to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know who's accepting this next one?
I will call it up.
Okay, thanks.
For item, we're on to Item 2B, which is International Day of Peace.
Whereas each year, the International Day of Peace is observed around the world on the 21st of September. The UN General Assembly has declared this as a day devoted to strengthening the ideals of peace through observing 24 hours of nonviolence and ceasefire. And whereas in 2021, as we heal from the COVID-19 pandemic, we are inspired to think creatively and collectively about how to help everyone recover, how to build resistance, resilience, and how to transform our world into one that is more equal, more just, inclusive, sustainable, and healthier. And whereas the pandemic is known for hitting underprivileged and marginalized groups the hardest, by April 2021, over 687 million COVID-19 vaccine doses had been administered globally, but over 100 countries had not received a single dose. And whereas the pandemic has been accompanied by a surge in stigma, discrimination, and hatred, which only cost more lives. The virus attacks all without caring where we are from or what we believe. In confronting this common foe, we must be reminded that we are not each other's enemy. To be able to recover from the devastation of the pandemic, we must make peace with one another. And whereas, we must make peace with nature. Despite the travel restrictions and economic shutdowns, climate change is not on pause. What we need is a green and sustainable global economy that produces jobs, reduces emissions, and builds resilience to climate impacts. And whereas, the 2021 theme for the International Day of Peace is recovering better for an equitable and sustainable world. We invite you to join the efforts of the UN family as we focus on recovering better for a more equitable and peaceful world. Now therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2021 to be International Day of Peace throughout the City of Iowa City and urge all government departments and agencies, organizations, schools, places of worship, and individuals in our city to commemorate in an appropriate manner the International Day of Peace.
Thank you, Councilor Weiner. And receiving this is David Hempel. And accepting, he'll be accepting this on behalf of Veterans for Peace, Iowa Physicians for Social Responsibility, City of Iowa City Equity and Human Rights Office, Johnson County Chapter, and United Nations Association, USA. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Teague. On the 21st, there will be an observance across from the, from the bank down the street here in the, in the Ped Mall, the northern part of the Ped Mall. We'll have some folding chairs for elderly citizens or people with disabilities. But mostly, we'll just stand for 45 minutes or so and have an observance from 4:30 to about 5:15 or 5:30. And everyone is welcome. There'll be some music and a few little speeches and words pertaining to peace. All the organizations that you mentioned, we all believe in justice. So no justice, no peace. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And we have this proclamation, which Councilor Weiner will give to you. Thank you again. Item 2C is National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize the contributions of Hispanic Americans and to celebrate Hispanic heritage and culture. And whereas each year, the federal government and local government observe National Hispanic Heritage Month as the period from September 15th to October 15th by recognizing and celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas September 15th is significant as a starting date for Hispanic Heritage Month because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September 16th and September 18th respectfully. And whereas Latinx have made innumerable contributions to Iowa City community, and it is important the city recognize and celebrate the diverse histories and cultures of the Latinx population. And whereas the Latinx community is integral to our city with business owners and residents alike who are proud to be a part of the Latinx community but hope for greater visibility, recognition, and representation. And whereas the City of Iowa City continually strive to foster mutual understanding and respect among all people. And whereas the observance affords special opportunities to become more knowledgeable about the Hispanic heritage and to honor the many Hispanics who have contributed to the progress of Iowa City, the state, and the nation. Now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2021 through October 15th, 2021 to be National Hispanic Heritage Month. And receiving this will be Jessica from the Human Rights Commission. Welcome.
Gracias a cada de ti y los miembros del Consejo Municipal que me pedieron aceptar esta proclamación en nombre de las personas hispanoamericanas americanas que tenemos en nuestra comunidad. No puedo hablar perfectamente en español, pero yo creo que es importante que voy a tratar. Pues como saben, esta proclamación es en honor del mes de nacional de la herencia hispana que hasta el 15 de octubre. Sin embargo, también debemos asegurarnos de tomarnos el tiempo y reconocer que estas personas y familias hispanas deben ser valoradas todos los días y no solo en celebración de solo un mes. Ellos son nuestros vecinos, ellos son nuestros compañeros de trabajo y las clases, y nuestros amigos. Aseguramos que las palabras y los sentimientos de esta proclamación suenen verdaderos en todas nuestras acciones y decisiones esta noche y en el futuro. Okay, so now English. So, thank you, Mayor Teague and the members of the council for allowing me to accept this proclamation on behalf of Hispanic Heritage Month for all Hispanic Americans and individuals that we have in our community today. As you know, this proclamation is in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs through October 15th. However, we should also make sure that we take the time and acknowledge these individuals and families as they should be valued every day and not just in celebration of this month. They are our neighbors, our colleagues, our classmates, and our friends. Let's make sure that the words and sentiments in the proclamation ring true in all of our actions and decisions tonight and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2D is National Senior Center Month.
Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better the lives of younger generations. And whereas Iowa City Johnson County Senior Center, also known as the Center, has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Iowa City and Johnson County. And whereas, through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, the Iowa City Johnson County Senior Center empowers older adults to contribute to their own health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas, the Center and the City of Iowa City affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older adults by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. The Center provides opportunities for seniors to maintain and improve their wellness, continue to learn, share experiences while engaging in local volunteer roles, and stay connected with friends and community members. And whereas, the Center celebrates 40 years of service for multiple generations and many to come in the future, and begins celebrating their anniversary at a party in the park with cake and ice cream and watching a community film. Additional opportunities to celebrate include a Grandparents' Day themed storytime at Mercer Park, located at 2701 Bradford Drive, Iowa City, at 10:30 AM on September 10th, co-sponsored by the Center and the Iowa City Public Library. And whereas, we acknowledge the importance and the numerous contributions of the Center and call upon all residents to recognize the special contributions of the Senior Center members, participants, and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of our diverse and growing older adult population in our community. Now therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim September to be National Senior Center Month. And accepting is Angela McConville, Senior Center Commission Chair.
Yes, I'm Senior Center Commission Chair Angela McConville. I actually live in Oxford, so I'm the county representative. I also coordinate senior programming at the City of North Liberty. So since 1981, for 40 years, the Center, this incredible historic building, has been offering classes and services for Johnson County community members aged 50 and older, 50 and better. That's a lot of us in this room. I'm nearing 50, so we'll welcome you into the Center when you're 50. Please join me in thanking the amazing Senior Center team of Latasha, Michelle, Kristen, Emily, and Jessie for their work over the last 18 months in particular to keep seniors engaged from afar and to safely bring seniors back into this building when it was safe. This was no easy feat and required a lot of cyber help to get seniors comfortable, or at least somewhat comfortable, with virtual meetings and gatherings. The Center assisted with several large and small-scale COVID-19 vaccine clinics in Iowa City, Solon and North Liberty with me, during the beginning of the vaccine rollout to seniors. This meant we all took on long days of phone calls to people who had access barriers, including language, transportation, and technology barriers. The Center's vision is a lofty goal, but not an impossible one, to end social isolation for persons 50-plus, and their efforts never took a pause. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Taylor will give you the proclamation.
Thank you so much.
All right, we are at Items number 3 through 7, which is our consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
Move.
Second.
Second, Burgess.
And would anyone from the public like to address a topic that is on our consent agenda, Items 3 through 7? Saying no one, council discussion? Roll call please.
Ms.
Yes.
Sollee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Item number 7. I'm sorry, item number 8 is our community comment time. And so individuals will be provided three minutes to speak, and we have a clock over there. The community comment period will end at 7:00 PM unless an extension is needed to meet a minimum of 30 minutes of total time allotted. So we have more than 30 minutes. I do reserve as mayor the right to reduce the three minutes period based on the number of individuals desiring to speak. Additional comments may be sent to the City Council via council@IowaCity. Iowa, I'm gonna say that again. Additional comments can be sent to the City Council via our email, which is council@iowa-city.org, or through the City Clerk's office. At this time, I'm gonna ask people that would like to speak on an item that is not on any agenda item to step to the podium at this time. And then there is a table where we need you to write your name, first and last, and your address. And then when you come to speak at the podium, please share that. Welcome.
Buenas tardes. Tengan cada uno de ustedes. Gracias por estar presente.
Good evening. Thank you for each and every one of you to be present here today.
Mi nombre es Ninozca Campos. Soy de Honduras y resido en Iowa City.
My name is Ninozca Campos. I'm from Honduras and I live in Iowa City.
Soy un miembro de la coalición de trabajadores esenciales excluidos del estado de Iowa.
I'm a member of the Excluded Essential Worker Fund here in Iowa.
A nuestra vida se nos sumó el impacto socioeconómico de la pandemia.
Our lives were affected hugely by the pandemic.
El cual nadie estaba preparado para perder su empleo.
Nobody was prepared to lose their employment.
Y quedar sin el sustento para su hogar.
And left without anything to sustain their living space.
Quedando en circunstancias críticas y severas.
They were left in situations that were critical.
Sabiendo que no tendríamos ningún beneficio económico a nuestro favor.
Knowing that we wouldn't be getting any kind of financial relief.
Trabajadores esenciales durante la pandemia.
We were the essential workers during the pandemic.
Porque a pesar de la incertidumbre y la ansiedad que se vivía.
Because through everything and on the anxiety that we went through.
Tomamos el riesgo de salir a trabajar.
We took the risk to leave and go work.
Para que la sociedad siguiera funcionando.
So that society would keep functioning.
Sabiendo que podíamos contagiarnos y contagiar a nuestras familias.
We did this knowing that we could get sick with COVID and infect our kids.
Ahora cada una de estas personas que está aquí somos trabajadores esenciales excluidos de la pandemia.
Now every one of these people in this room are excluded and essential workers of this pandemic.
Y venimos delante de ustedes para que se nos apoye.
And we're here in front of you guys to ask for your support.
Con un cheque de estímulo económico directo de 3,200 dólares para cada persona.
We want a direct stimulus check for each person, $3,200.
Y un cheque de estímulo para cada niño porque no ha sido fácil para nosotros, las trabajadores esenciales sobrellevar la pandemia.
And also a stimulus check for our kids. It hasn't been easy what we've gone through this pandemic.
No queremos ayuda para renta. Queremos un cheque directo para cada persona para que cada persona sepa qué es lo que tiene que hacer.
We don't want help with rent. We want to decide what we need help with. Every one of us knows the need, our need.
Y así compensar un poco lo que vivimos durante la pandemia. Gracias.
And this might give us just a little bit of what we deserve because of what we went through through the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Juan Martinez. And my address is that, so my, my address is 1107 Sandusky Drive. So I'm here with the Catholic Worker House. And this is, this past week, we've been visiting people in Iowa City and the surrounding communities like Muscatine, West Liberty, to ask for their support in the form of signatures for the Excluded Workers Fund. And so while knocking on these doors and talking to people, I learned that these people who are part of this community that pay taxes, as well as people who put their lives at risk to ensure our community is stable and running, they've been suffering throughout this whole pandemic. And now, like now, after we've been knocking through doors and stuff like that, at the end of the day, the one thing that stuck with me was this one couple that spoke out saying that when we told them about this, when we told them about this, they said, we said, they said that this is the most selfish thing we ever heard before about for the Fund Excluded Workers, how they didn't get stimulus. And saying that these people are putting their lives at risk to help us. And last year, my mom, my sisters, myself, we had COVID. It was terrible. We were blessed to have help for my family, my neighbors, you know? Job security for one of my parents. Some people in my family receive stimulus checks, unemployment when needed, which is something the majority of the excluded workers could not benefit from. Now, I might be young, and you guys might be asking, what am I doing up here, talking to you guys? I'm just, this is, this is an issue that I, that I care about a lot, especially these people back here. These are all my people. These people need help. Just like us as Americans, we should treat them as Americans, you know? Because we're the, we're the country of opportunity. Treat them just like Americans. And that's why I ask you, are you with us? Or are you just gonna stand there like a bystander and not help us? And thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Barb Stendersen. I'm the president of SEIU Local 199, and I'm also a physical therapist who works at UIHC. So direct cash assistance.
And your address, I know you're in Iowa City, right?
What?
Your address, please.
Oh, Iowa City. I live in Iowa City.
Yes.
So the direct cash assistance to excluded workers, premium hazard pay for essential workers, and affordable housing were the big three choices of thousands of Iowa Cityans who participated in the city's public input process. The Fund Excluded Workers Coalition has also surveyed hundreds of undocumented immigrant workers who have survived 18 months of this pandemic without any relief or assistance. The need is urgent, the need is very clear, and the need is now. Yesterday, our coalition released a groundbreaking news report entitled "Excluded in the Heartland: Impacts of COVID-19 Crisis on Working-Class Immigrant Families in Iowa." The report was based on a survey of 289 undocumented immigrant workers in Iowa, and it was conducted between June 28th and August 31st. 80% of those respondents reported losing their job or income during the pandemic and said they were still struggling to get by without assistance, without access to affordable healthcare or government relief. The report directly, the report directs policymakers and elected officials to take urgent action to address the racial inequities exacerbated by the pandemic. An Excluded Worker Fund would give 3,200 stimulus checks, $3,200 in stimulus checks for urgent, uh, sorry, to thousands of undocumented migrant and previously incarcerated workers who were left out of the federal pandemic relief. The money would be spent locally and on urgent needs without the restrictions that have prevented other forms of aid being delivered effectively. Most notable, the General Assistance Fund has been one of those. An Excluded Workers Fund would also see that premium hazard pay bonus gets paid to these low-wage essential workers in the amount of $1,600. And those essential workers would be those working for less than $15 an hour. The Excluded Workers Fund must be operated by city and county governments, not corporate consultants or the nonprofit industrial complex. A government-run Excluded Workers Fund with no barriers to access would be more efficient, more sustainable, and wouldn't have to be recreated from scratch every time there's a crisis. In closing, I ask that everyone in the room who supports an Excluded Workers Fund should show their support by standing up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address any topic that is not on the council agenda?
Yeah, there is a guy, yeah.
Okay. Oh, welcome. Welcome.
My name's Kayla, and I live here in Iowa. And our parents need the money so we can get food.
Thank you, Kayla. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Katie.
Hi, my name is Katie Beekler. I live here in Iowa City. And I am here on behalf of SEIU Local 199. I'm also here on behalf of Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement as we're part of the Excluded Worker Fund Coalition. For months, the Fund Excluded Workers Coalition has been presenting our proposal. We have been speaking out. Folks who have been directly impacted by this pandemic and who haven't been eligible for relief, not even from the county's general assistance program, because they're undocumented, have been incredibly vulnerable in giving testimony about what they're going through and what they need. You talked about, in your work session, a robust public listening program. But when the Fund Excluded Workers Coalition showed up at your listening session on August 11th with a hundred people in support, the only person there was Jeff Fruin. I hear you talk about helping workers, supporting workers, an equitable community, and yet not one of you could be bothered to show up and listen to the people you all were elected to represent. Not one of you. Watching the work session today, I couldn't help but notice that the needs the Fund Excluded Workers Coalition has highlighted were consistently at the top of the list of the things that you heard from people. And yet, the suggested allocation was criminally low. Only two thousand dollars? Only to adults? That isn't even close to the equity that you all said you're committed to and in fact that your proclamations tonight claimed you believe in. Those of us who qualified for stimulus checks received thirty-two hundred dollars over the last year and a half. Those of us who qualified for unemployment received even more. Children were included in that relief. How dare you suggest less for the folks who didn't receive that? Folks need relief, and they need it right now. They cannot wait any longer, and there are no other programs that do what the Fund Excluded Workers Coalition has proposed. The General Assistance Fund is not a replacement for direct cash relief. The barriers to it are still too great, and the money that comes from it is too little. Giving money to nonprofits is not a replacement for direct cash relief. It happened with the CARES Act money, and huge swaths of people were left out. Lots of them are in this room with us. Y'all have known this money would be coming for right about six months now. You've talked and talked about it. It is time to do something right now.
And I do want to make sure that everyone that is speaking is signing that book. Thank you all so much. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Eric Harris. I'm a member of the TRC of Iowa City, so I'm known by many. I'm here speaking. One of the first things that I want to say, that in the past week or so, I've done door-to-door canvassing where I've talked to people that's going through the pandemic. In one case that I talked to people, it was one person who was eligible to get unemployment in a household of six or seven people. That one person got unemployment, the rest were undocumented. So that one person got unemployment and took care of the whole family, and they all had COVID-19. Some of the things that I heard in the proposal by the city manager, with all due respect, you know, we talked about things about housing and things like that and, you know, helping small businesses, and those are all great things. But the money has initials. It is called ARP, which is the American Rescue Plan to rescue all the people in this room for COVID-19. Not things that were pre-pandemic problems already. Housing, affordable wages, because what are they going to do? Give money to small businesses who pay people twelve dollars an hour? Can anybody in this room tell me they can afford to live on twelve dollars an hour? If you're going to give money to small businesses, how about giving them advice to pay people a livable wage? Don't waste this money on stuff that's not going to be, you know, used in the right place. And things that were pre-pandemic problems. Housing has been a problem in this country for decades. That American Rescue money is to rescue people like this. All these people that we have gathered here. You know, I understand that we have problems. Like, one of the things that was brought up to me, climate change. That I heard, that's been a problem in this country, and we're not even going to meet the standard that we need to be at for climate change. Like, I read a report that said we're about twenty years off of that because we didn't deal with it before. All these people I met, all the stories I heard when I canvassed door-to-door, which is no disrespect to anybody in here, but maybe you guys should try that and go listen to the stories about the people that struggled. Their children struggled. Their family members died. And then I hear talk, "Oh, well, we need to, you know, invest in diversity markets in the South District" and things like that. I've heard things like that. And I'm in this with saying this, and this might, you know, inflame some people, and they might not like what I got to say. But I was at every diversity market. I was even one of the people who set up the diversity market. It's about two council members in this room, and they knew who they are. They were the only ones I saw there. How can you speak on a diversity market when you didn't even go and check it out? I know the members who were there, who came and showed... Maybe it wasn't every week, but I'm using my time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hola, muy buenas tardes.
Hi, good evening.
Mi nombre es Cindy Zapata.
My name is Cindy Zapata.
Y apoyo el Fondo de Trabajadores Excluidos.
I support the Excluded Workers Fund.
Hasta el día de hoy seguimos en pandemia.
Still to this day, we're in the pandemic.
Donde nosotros, la comunidad hispana, no tuvimos opción para quedarnos en nuestras casas.
It's us, the Latino community, that has not had the option to stay at home.
Porque sí es cierto, hubieron muchos programas. Sí es cierto, hubieron muchos programas, pero era muy difícil calificar nosotros, las personas, sin un seguro social.
Yes, it is certain that there is a lot of different programs for relief out there, but it was very difficult for us, those who are undocumented without a social security number, to qualify.
Y creo que somos muchos que hasta el día de hoy no nos hemos podido recuperar por la pandemia.
There is a lot of us, and still to this day, we haven't been able to recuperate from the pandemic.
Y creo que es justo y necesario un cheque de estímulo directo a cada una de las personas que nos encontramos aquí.
I think it's just and necessary that each one of us here would receive a direct stimulus check.
Para poder recuperarnos de todo lo que sufrimos nosotros, los inmigrantes, para la pandemia.
To be able to start recuperating from all of the things that we have lost and suffered from the pandemic.
Muchas gracias, bendiciones.
Thank you so much and blessings.
Would anyone... Thank you. Will anyone else like to address the topic not on the agenda?
I'm sorry, what was that?
No, welcome.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Nancy Raudales.
Good afternoon, my name is Nancy Raudales.
Este, estoy aquí porque estoy apoyando al fondo de los trabajadores excluidos esenciales.
I'm here because I'm in support of the Excluded Workers Fund.
Este, yo, mi pregunta es para ustedes, que todos en la pandemia tuvieron un cheque de estímulo.
My question for all of you is, did you all receive a direct stimulus check during the pandemic?
Y por qué nosotros, los ilegales, los que no tenemos documentos, no lo obtuvimos.
And why us, who don't have documents, didn't get one?
Y tampoco, usted sabe que también hay niños que son ilegales, y tampoco obtuvieron ese cheque de estímulo.
There's also lots of children who are undocumented and also did not get the direct stimulus checks.
Y yo creo que sería justo de que nosotros nos tomaran en cuenta en esta ocasión, en darnos ese fondo que nosotros estamos pidiendo para cada persona de nuestras casas, para cada familia de Iowa City, porque nosotros fuimos trabajadores esenciales en Iowa City.
I think it would be just and fair if you use some of this money to give us, not just individuals, but everyone in the household, direct stimulus checks because we were the ones that were the essential workers during the pandemic.
Así que nosotros no nos despidieron de nuestros trabajos, tuvimos que buscar nuevos trabajos para sobrellevar la pandemia.
All of us, we were let go from a lot of our jobs, and we had to look for other jobs during the pandemic just to survive.
Y aparte de eso, nos tuvimos que endeudar mucho, este, para pagar renta, para pagar luz, para comprar comida, para ponerle gas a nuestro carro, etc., etc.
Also, we had to take out a lot of debt to be able to pay rent, light, put gas in our car, etc., etc.
Entonces pienso que es justo que nosotros también recibamos un cheque. Así como yo, hay muchas familias aquí atrás, y no solo somos estas. Hay mucha gente que está trabajando y por lo mismo tanto no pudo venir hoy. Somos demasiadas personas en Iowa City, y creo que con el dinero que nos han aprobado ya no es suficiente para todos.
So I think it's just and fair that we would get direct stimulus checks, all of us here. And it's not just all of us here in the room. There's a lot of people that support this cause that are working because they can't be here. I don't think the amount of money that you propose in your plan is nearly enough to provide direct stimulus checks to the people that are excluded and essential.
Somos muchas familias en Iowa City que decimos presente a este proyecto. Muchas gracias.
There's a lot of us here in Iowa City that have been present in the Excluded Workers Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Ann Houlihan, and I'm with the Catholic Worker House, 1414 Sycamore. And you're talking about mutual respect, peace proclamations, Hispanic Heritage Month, etc., etc. tonight. It seems to me that you like to talk about peace, but despite the overwhelming need of Hispanic refugees, undocumented workers, and ex-felons, we are making proclamations without providing adequate financial assistance to excluded workers. We really hope that you will take this serious and help out these people at the earliest convenience.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm back. I'm Jessica Andino. I serve as the chair of the Human Rights Commission for the city of Iowa City, and I live on the east side of Iowa City. I just want to take a few moments here to acknowledge the amount of time that the HRC, or the Human Rights Commission, took to discuss the recommendation that we had put forth to you guys tonight. That was a couple Tuesdays ago, in which we were allocating the entire, well, four million from you guys and four million suggested by the county, which was within the pilot program that was suggested by the Excluded Workers Fund. We thought about it, we discussed it, we spent our time. You all appointed us to be there. So we are recommending to you to allocate the full funding amount now instead of just sitting on it. I volunteer for a lot of different organizations in the community, and this community needs help. I'm also going to say that I have a personal contact. My husband came here illegally back in, oh, spent quite a time. But I have family members that this affects. It's not just the people that are here in this crowd that this affects. This is maybe a handful of the people that this money will actually touch, and it will be reinvested back into our community. They're going to buy diapers, they're going to pay rent, they're going out to eat, they're going to be helping our community. Why not give it directly to the people that need the help, that benefits everyone here? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Maureen Vassili, and I live in Iowa City. These people here are the ones that did the work. They're the ones that put their families at risk and their health at risk as well. They're the ones that deserve the money, and they need it now. Not in five months from now. They need it now. They needed it five months ago. So I'm hoping that you will step it up, and let's get going, and give them the money they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Pat Bowen, and I live in Iowa City. I'm a member of the Fund Excluded Workers Group, as well as Iowa CCI, and I'm a supporter of the Catholic Worker House. And the reason I'm here tonight is to support these people. They have supported us. They have put, as Maureen said, they have put their lives on the line. They have probably lost family and friends. And we sit here in our comfortable homes, and we got all that money back last year. And we didn't, I didn't need that money, but I was just given it, for what reason? These people deserve money now. They are in dire straits. They don't have anything. They're going to get kicked out of their houses. We've heard about the rental evictions being done away with. I mean, the security that they had. They can't even feed their children. That one little girl said she needs money for food. Is that not a sad state for all of us to sit here and say, "Oh, wait six months, and we'll give you some cash through some other bureaucracy"? That's not the way this should work. These people are people, and they need the money now.
Thank you. Welcome.
She's signing in, and she'll be right up.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Ingrid Ramírez.
My name is Ingrid Ramírez.
Y estoy apoyando el grupo.
And I'm in support of this group. It's the Fondo de Trabajadores Excluidos.
Y este, creo que ya escuchamos bastante acerca de, para qué es este fondo, pero algo que vino a mi mente ahorita escuchando cada uno.
I think that we've heard a lot about this fund, but something has come to mind, listening to all this.
El, yo he visto acá, tengo siete años en Iowa City.
I've been here, I've been living in Iowa City for seven years.
Y es un estado bastante frío, que nadie quiere trabajar acá.
And what I have seen is that this is a state that's very cold, or nobody really wants to do the work.
Y estoy muy orgullosa de mi gente hispana, de cada país.
I am so proud of my Hispanic people from all of their different places of origin.
Porque cada uno de los que están acá trabajan en el roofing, construcción, landscaping, housekeeping. Hacen el trabajo de limpieza los apartamentos de la universidad.
Because all of these people in front of you do the work of roofing, construction, landscaping, cleaning apartments, cleaning universities. I would also like to add that we also do this for you. We clean your houses, we clean your hotels to stay in, we take you your food. And part of the reason why we do this is that you can see us in a good light.
Hacemos los hispanos el trabajo más duro acá en todos Estados Unidos y acá en Iowa City.
Us Hispanics do the hardest work here in Iowa City. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add that we all pay taxes.
Yep, and we'll just ask people to come and take the podium. We're going to go ahead and allow you to speak, and then when you're done, you can sign in behind.
Okay. Dices si quieres hablar, por favor, haz fila. Y también tiene que notar tu nombre.
Hola, muy buenas tardes, mi nombre es Freddie.
Hi, very good evening to you. My name is Freddie.
I live in Corville.
I live in Corville.
La cosa que estoy viendo en este momento, como ustedes ven, tengo familia, vengo sucio por la responsabilidad que escuche esto y estoy metido en esta organización.
The reason that why I'm here today, and you can see me, I come with my kids, I come dirty, the reason that I am with this organization, Excluded Workers Fund.
Como ella lo acaba de decir, soy uno de los techeros que, posiblemente en este año que sucedió el granizo que pasó, está a lo mejor he trabajado en alguna de sus casas para cuidar que no sus casas estén bien y no haya ningún daño.
I am one of the roofers that it's very possible that I was working on your roof. And when the hail hit this year, it's very possible that I was the one that was repairing this during... during this year.
Y como se lo dije a él desde la vez pasada, que yo tengo familia, lo pueden ver, tengo unos niños pequeños.
And just like I told you, Mr. Fruen, the last time I spoke to you, I have little kids.
Desde que comenzó la pandemia, mi vida ha hecho trabajar, trabajar día con día, arriesgándome a mis hermosos bebés que son nacidos en Estados Unidos.
Since the pandemic started, day after day after day, I went to work so that, taking a risk, so that I could take care of my beautiful children that you can see in front of me. Who are you as citizens?
Ustedes pudieron ver en las televisiones que no, las noticias qué triste se ve cuando un bebé hermoso se muere de una enfermedad por uno de adulto. Traer una pandemia y ver a su hijo sufrir, eso es doloroso.
You can see, you all saw in the television how heartbroken it is to see a young child die because their adult parent brought COVID home to their children. This is very heartbreaking.
Solo porque, por ir a trabajar, por ayudarles a todos ustedes, y ahora que nosotros pedimos un poco de nuestra ayuda, creo que ellos también merecen esto.
And what was it all for? Just that we could go to work? So that we could be working for you during the, doing the work, the essential work that you needed to put our beautiful children at risk?
Tengo once años de mi vida dejándolos en los techos para ayudar a la comunidad americana. So creo que esto es justo, algo que todos nosotros aquí lo pueden ver, recibamos un poco de sus ayudas.
I've been working in roofing 11 years, taking the risk. I think it's just that the time is now that you help us, give us something back that we need, that we deserve.
For real, we need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Anita. I just would like to make a short comment that I hope you take seriously. Por qué no nos quieren tomar en cuenta, verdad, a todos nosotros que somos trabajadores esenciales, verdad, y ahora que estamos necesitando, no nos dan su ayuda.
Why is it that you don't want to take us into account? We are all the essential workers and now that we need your help, you don't want to take us into account?
Porque le aseguro que todos los que estamos aquí pagamos impuestos.
Because I know for sure, every one of us that are here in this room, we pay taxes.
Y de esos impuestos cada uno de ustedes recibe aunque sea un porcentaje ya que son servidores públicos.
And part of these taxes, even if it's a small percent in your salary, even if it goes to public services, you all receive.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Suleim Mora. Vivo en Iowa City. Como todos mis compañeros acá, salí huyendo de la violencia en mi tierra, en Colombia.
Hi, buenas tardes. I missed her name. Suleim Mora. Just like.
Suleim Mora.
Sumay Mora?
Suleim Mora.
Ah, Suleim Mora. Gracias. Just like all of us here that are sitting in this room, we left the violence in our country.
Y muchos de nosotros no solamente nos hemos expuesto con la pandemia sino con cualquier otra situaciones que nos encontramos en el diario vivir debido a que agradecemos a todos ustedes que nos han recibido en su país.
I'm going to do my best on that one. So not just the pandemic, but every day beside the pandemic, we have put our lives, you know, at risk and gone through a lot of hard things. And thank you for, we understand that you guys have welcomed us here in this country.
Pero necesitamos que nos tengan en cuenta porque necesitamos tener más tranquilidad dentro de nuestros hogares y poder transitar por el país o por la ciudad con algo que acredite que realmente somos tan humanos como ustedes y que servimos a este país.
Muy intentar. Lo que dijo era, sorry, this is, what I'd like to say is that we need a little bit of your help that so we can live or kind of move and be in this community with a little bit more calmness or less fear to be in this place. We need your help.
Y es por eso que necesitamos que nos apoyen tanto con lo económico, que es algo que necesitamos con urgencia, como dijo una compañera, para pagar deudas que adquirimos a través de la pandemia.
And this is why we need help, economic help, just like you've been hearing from my compañeras, because of this pandemic.
Y que por favor, como sea, llegue un pliego de peticiones a la presidencia y a emigración y nos permitan acceder a tener la green card porque damos todo de sí y necesitamos esa ayuda de ustedes para nosotros, por favor.
Also, we need support. I kind of miss about something like about the green card telling the president as well, but we need this support for us as well.
Agradezco a todos mis compañeros. No solo es Colombia, no es solo Ecuador, México, Honduras, Salvador, toda Sudamérica, Centroamérica, y cualquier otro país que esté acá porque todos entregamos de nosotros nuestra vida aquí y dejamos todo en nuestros países.
I'd like to thank everyone here, not just my, you know, people from my home country for Colombia, but Ecuador, México, everyone, because we left our lives, we left everything to come here to make our life here.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Noah and I live in Iowa City. I have nothing new to add since you've heard it multiple times and you've heard it again today and months and months and months. So stop sitting and act. Fund the Excluded Workers Fund now, not just your one or two million pendly, like actually fund it so people actually need instead of just the, what was it, 2,000 for adults in household? That is despicable. Do not do that. And fund these people and stop waiting. Now. Act now. Act now. Act now. Act now. Act now. Act now. Not later, now. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have, is there anyone else? One more speaker?
Yeah, hi, I'm Emily Stenwell. It's nice to be here in front of all of you. I've been providing language access and other organization to all these folks in the room and it's just been awesome to work with them and hear what they need directly. I hope you all feel so excited that they're here and they want to tell you exactly what you need because when we talk about equality and equity, this is it, right? The plan is a start, but I was disappointed. One million is not enough. We need four million from the city, we need four million from the county, and then we need a half a million to administer the funds, right? So $3,200 directly to adults and children to undocumented essential and excluded workers who did not get a stimulus check like we did because they went through the pandemic just like us. So we need eight million, 8.5 million. Again, four million from the city, four million from the county. I know that they're going to be excited to work with you on this. Point five for administration costs. Now, the county government, the General Assistance Fund has a lot of issues. We know that and they're working on those. And I can give lots of suggestions to keep making those better, right? They can administer the funds directly if they need to, but we can use a third party. The money should not go to a nonprofit in town. It needs to be a third party. Now, this piece is really important. There has to be no restrictions. People are fearful sometimes about using certain, giving away certain information. No restrictions. And we have a model for that. It's called the Johnson County ID. I use it all the time with folks. They need to provide proof of residency and a photo ID and that's it. And that's what we need to require to get a stimulus check. So again, 8.5 million, four from the city, four from the county, half a million to administer it to everyone sitting in this room and more people wanted to come, but they had to work. You know, I listened to all these proclamations, but it doesn't mean anything unless you do something. And this is the time. In Iowa City and Johnson County, we can set the example. We can start this so that other counties and cities in Iowa can do the same thing. We are going to be the model. We want to be the model, right? We want to have the mask mandate in the city, right? Because it's the right thing to do. We can do that. We don't have to listen to the governor. Let's be the model for the Excluded Workers Fund and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I am, thank you. Community comment is closed, but I wanted to thank everybody that was a part of the community comment piece.
Quiero dar gracias a todos por venir a hablar. Okay, ya el tiempo terminado. Si quieres vamos todos afuera para practicar lo que pasó. Thank you.
Thank you. We were just given a minute just for the individuals that were leaving. All right.
Yes.
All right. We're on to item number nine, which is planning and zoning. And 9A is zoning code amendment, self-service storage uses in community, commercial zones ordinance. This is an ordinance amending Title 14 zoning code to allow self-service storages uses by special exemption in CC-2 zoning districts. And I'm going to open the public hearing. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As was introduced, this is a zoning code amendment for a change to the zoning code regarding the self-service storage use in one of our commercial districts. This is a request that's been requested based on an applicant requesting to do something with a property, that being Southgate for reuse of their property at 947 Highway 6, formerly the Slumberland Big Box Store. Their request was to acknowledge that that use was ceasing as a retail use and they're wanting to reuse their building for indoor self-storage use. Self-storage uses are only allowed currently in the city's intensive commercial and general industrial districts. Sorry. And the city has acknowledged or explored this code change due to the acknowledgement that there's changing, a changing retail landscape when it comes to big box stores, acknowledging that that type of retail has changed over the years. Staff generally does support the text amendment you're seeing tonight rather than rezoning this property to one of those more intensive commercial or industrial districts. The amendment that we crafted and are proposing to you tonight on behalf of Southgate as the applicant is to allow these kinds of self-storage uses by special exception process with general and specific approval criteria to be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment. As I said, the proposed amendment would allow this particular use in the existing zone, the CC2 zone, and would be subject to a special exception with general and specific approval criteria, which I'll go through in a little bit. But just to take a step back to talk about special exceptions, they have general approval criteria and a special exception is a level of review in our code that's more intensive than simply allowing something by right in a zoning district or allowing it as a provisional use in a zoning district. Provisional meaning that you'd have certain provisions that need to be met in order to allow the use. That would still be a staff review. In this case, what we're proposing in this code amendment is for review as a special exception by the Board of Adjustment. So that's the most stringent type of review that could be proposed and that's what we think is the most appropriate. What's on the screen here is the general approval criteria that the Board of Adjustment would look at for any special exception. In this case, the crafting of this ordinance includes, excuse me, specific approval criteria just regarding self-storage uses. And those can include four main items, including the stipulation that the use be conducted completely within a conditioned space of a building, not outside. Also that the units for storage not be individually accessed and that there be no more than two garage doors, overhead garage doors, providing access to those store spaces and that they be primarily provided at the rear of a property. Also that a substantial proportion both in the depth of the building and the length of the facade of the building still contain retail uses so that the facade of the building still looks like a retail use and the self-storage is a component of a larger group of other uses. Finally, that buildings containing self-storage be subject to site development standards much like their big box retail in the first place. So those are the site development standards that are, that apply to large retailers. They would still be applicable. They deal with things like the facade or the face of the building as it faces the public realm, details of the roof, details about building materials, and details about how entryways would work. In staff's analysis, we did look at the acknowledging that the retail landscape has changed. But this tonight is the applicant in this case with Southgate, so I'll let them get into the analysis of the changing retail climate in a little bit more detail for you. We did look at the areas that are currently zoned CC2 where this zoning text change would impact. They're primarily along highway corridors. Some of them are located in commercial nodes. Some of those commercial nodes also have additional design reviews. So Towncrest, for example, has additional regulations and the Riverfront Crossing does. But some of these other areas are also parts of commercial nodes, excuse me, including Pepperwood Plaza here in the center. So the specific criteria I said focus on encouraging active pedestrian-friendly front facades and requiring accommodation of other commercial uses. This slide just shows the general concept that Southgate is considering. It's not a proposal by any means, but it's one of many things that they are considering. And in crafting this ordinance, staff did look at other large communities in Iowa where generally self-storage uses are required to abide by additional standards when they occur in lower intensity commercial districts, much the way we've crafted this code change. As always, when we craft a code change, we're looking towards consistency with the plan, goals and objectives. In this case, there's several relevant ones about encouraging a healthy mix of independent and locally owned businesses as well as just general overall economic health and then as well as design, designing to and accommodating the community. So as far as steps go, we're at the orange here where the zoning code amendment is being considered through an ordinance change. If it were to be adopted, then the next step for redevelopment of this area or reuse of this area would be, as I said, reviewed by the Board of Adjustment through a special exception and then the typical site plan and building permit review steps. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending this zoning code amendment to you. They met it on August 5th and by a vote of four to zero are recommending adoption of this code change. And like I said, the applicant is with us this evening, Mayor, so I'll step aside and let them make comment.
Great. Welcome.
Any questions for me if you have them?
Any questions from council? All right, we're going to welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Caleb Wilson. I actually live in Kelowna. I have a Kelowna address. I wrote down in there. I'm here on behalf of Southgate Companies and I wanted to give a little more information about what led us to submitting this application for the zoning code text amendment. A little more background for the council to consider. And with me today as well is Brian Hall.
Everybody, I'm Brian Hall. I live up in.
Everybody, I'm Brian Hall. I live up in Cedar Rapids and manage some self-storage companies up around there.
So I'll share again a little more background about this application and what led us to this. So we were notified in the fall, around October in 2020, about Slumberland moving to Corvo, out of this building. Slumberland has been a longtime occupant of this space. And as was shared by the city staff, the retail landscape is dramatically changing. This building at 947 Highway one was built in a time where, again, retail was, was very different. Now, the building is set back far from the highway. It is a very deep building and a large building as well. We knew it was going to be difficult to find a new tenant for this space, as Pepperwood Plaza has, has been difficult to fill. Space is actually even up on the highway itself. So we started as soon as we were notified and had indication that the tenant was going to be leaving, working on future plans for this building. We've worked very closely with the city in this process to try to find what is going to be the best future use for this building and what kind of use does the community here want? What kind of needs are in the community that we can meet with this building that'll be a long-term financially stable use for the building? We explored many different paths for this, and one of the, one of the things we did was we worked with the, the city's retail consultant out of Texas, I believe, and they went to different prospects that they had worked with on, on other shopping centers and, and brought this building to them to see if they were interested and produced no real leads for us. So we continued to move down several paths with this and engaged community members and multiple different groups to get feedback on what would be a good solution for this space. And we, we landed on self-storage initially for the whole building is what we were thinking. This, this space is about 38,000 square feet, and we knew there's a very high demand for it, but we were initially looking at, at just self-storage. As we got feedback from the community, we found that there was a demand or need for small retail spaces, small, nice retail spaces that were at a reasonable rents. And we had, had multiple businesses come to us. This idea was actually initially suggested to us from Wendy Ford, who works with the city here as well. And we took this idea and, and kind of ran with it and started looking at, you know, could we create space that would work for those businesses and then also the self-storage use? So through working with the city, the city shared with us that in the CC two zone, that, that current use is not allowable, and led us to this process of the zoning code text amendment application as being how we would make this space usable for, for this kind of use. So we, that's what brought us, has brought us to here. We are excited about the concept and the support from planning and zoning. We have several businesses who are actually interested in, in space of this size. So on the front, we're, we're going to be able to create what looks like three or four spaces that are somewhere between 800 to 1,200 square feet each. And we have a couple of different restaurants that are interested. One is a coffee shop, dessert shop, that Evelyn Casada runs called Choco Freso. She's been at the diversity market that was mentioned here earlier tonight. So some of you have maybe had her, her awesome food. And then another restaurant as well is very interested in it. And again, these are just people we've been having discussions with. None of this is certain, but they're really interested in this space based on the same concepts and conversations we've, we've had with them. So we believe that this use will be, again, is in very high demand in this community, this climate-controlled self-storage. We believe it'll draw good traffic to this center and help this be, you know, maintain the retail character of the center by having retail on the front, but again, utilize the rest of the building well in a way that the, the community actually wants and needs. I think those are the main notes that I had shared. Brian, anything to add to that?
Just in general, I mean, we've, we've worked on a couple of these around eastern Iowa, but I'm, I'm here just in case anybody has any management questions or what the inside of the building and the access and all that kind of fun stuff looks like.
You said how many store, store will be there?
What's that? I'm sorry.
How many store will be there? Like, how many business store will be there? I mean, not a storage.
Probably three or four, and it depends on how, how big each business would want, how big of a space each business would want. We think there will be roughly four to 5,000 square feet of retail space on the front. So it depends on how big of a space they want. We have, we, we're, we're able to meet with some contractors this week and did validate we can create the hood and venting for the restaurants. So we're, we're very excited about that because that seems to be a very high interest. Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step up to the podium. Before I close the public hearing, I wanted to just ask council if they're inclined to vote in agreement with the Planning and Zoning Commission. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion for first consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sally, seconded by Mims.
Weiner.
Weiner. I could, you leaned forward. I wasn't sure who said it. All right. Counsel discussion?
I really think this is, yeah, we miss, we're going to miss Slumberland, you know? I, I like that store, and I wish if they still will be in Iowa City, but still they are not far away. I really like the good use of the space, which is the self-historic desk amazing. It needed in Iowa City. I know a lot of people have to go like somewhere else in another city to use their historic. But this is good that we have this self-historic here and that the space for like kind of small businesses and restaurant would be amazing to add to that area of the city. And I like the parking lot in front of the, you know, the building where people can easy go there and park. And, you know, we're going to have a lot of traffic to go to that side of the city, which is, I was really looking forward to see some like kind of businesses, especially small businesses to grow there. Yeah, I will be supporting this project.
Yeah, I, I find this kind of an interesting evolution in the description of how it came to arrive at this proposal, and how it had initially been self-storage, and then through suggestions, developed this concept of kind of what I would almost think of as like a liner building that you might have around a parking garage or something of that sort. Kind of right sizing the retail in a way. So I'm, I'm happy to support it. It, it seems like it will serve a functional purpose, but also, I think, try to maintain the notion of, of this retail environment that's attractive in a more people-friendly retail sense.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think requiring that first 30 feet to be not the storage use will help incentivize those smaller commercial spaces, which we know are needed. I'm very excited for this particular project that you've described, and I hope that others who might take advantage of this opportunity will consider the, the model that I think was articulated to planning and zoning, which is that the self-storage can actually help subsidize the units in the front, making sure that those rents can be more affordable. Thank you for that.
I have to say, I'm, I'm impressed with the speed with which this project has, has evolved. It, it's always sad to see empty storefronts sitting for a length of time, but it, it seems like Slumberland just closed not that long ago, and, and we're already in the planning stage of, of putting something in this building and with a very attractive front facade with the creative use of that with, with restaurants and, and other such items. So I'm impressed.
All right. Roll call, please.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item nine B, this is vacation and conveyance of an alley right-of-way, ordinance vacating approximately 6,098 square feet of public right-of-way running north from Lafayette Street, east of South Dubuque Street, and authorizing conveyance to Gilbane Development Company. This is second consideration, and the applicant has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. And I just wanted to note that Councilor Burgess has recruising herself from this item. Any conversation, any conversation by council? Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to, seven, I'm sorry, six to one recrusal. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Sally.
Yes.
And I did not initially ask if there was anyone from the public that would like to address this topic. If so, please come forth at this time.
Of number 10.
We're at nine B. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one recrusal, which is Burgess. And then motion to accept correspondence. Can I get a motion, please?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Sally, seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right. We are at item number 10, which is fiscal year 2022 budget amendment. This is a resolution amending the current budget for our fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. I'm going to open the public hearing. And we're going to welcome our staff.
Jacqueline Feigl, Budget Compliance Officer. This is the first budget amendment for fiscal year 2022. First, a little bit of background. The original budget for FY 22 was approved in March sixth, was approved on March 16th of 2021. Runs through July 1st of 2021 to June 30th of 2022. City policy allows for amendments in the following situations: emergent situations, transfers from contingencies, expenditures with offsetting revenues or fund balance, and carryover of prior-year budget authority. You can amend per state code anytime during the fiscal year other than the last 30 days. So not in May, or, yeah, not in May, in June. Iowa City averages three amendments per fiscal year, typically in early fall, the spring of the following year, and then early summer. Next planned amendment coincides with the fiscal year 2023 budget process, which would be then approved in March. A quick overview, this amendment includes carryforward requests from the 2021 budget that were not spent, submitted by departments, reviewed by the City Manager's Office and the Finance Department. Budget policy is that carryforwards must be over $5,000 or 1% of the division's budget minimum. Capital improvement project budget carryforwards as well. Usually CIP aligns more with a calendar year compared to a fiscal year and, as well as includes multi-year projects. A few other small amendment items are included as well. Overall, revenues were increased for intergovernmental revenues, about 13 and a half million, majority of this coming from state and federal grants on CIP carryforwards. The next largest increase was in other financing sources for the sale of university and South District homes. Additionally, miscellaneous was for 195,000, and this is also for carryforwards for CIP funding. On the expenditure side, the program-level governmental capital projects increased by 35.8 million. Major CIP in here would include the American Legion Road, Melrose Avenue Improvements, and Benton Street Rehab. Business-type and enterprise program level increased by just over 14 million, primarily due to CIP there as well, including Scott Boulevard, trunk sewer, and annual sewer projects, amongst others. Additionally, community and economic development, just over 3 million in increase, primarily for carryforwards for CDBG and home, university, and South District home programs. In conclusion, this is the first amendment, like I mentioned, for fiscal year 22. Overall, the total impact of fund balance is a decrease of 40.7 million. This is covered through excess in fund balances and bonds and will not affect property tax levies. Any questions?
Hearing none. Thank you. All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come forth. We ask that you state your name and your address, please.
My name is Noah. My address is 410 East, East Washington Street. And I'd like to say you should amend it to defund ICPD since it is an emergency that they are causing more harm to our community than good. And we spend 25 million on cops and 600,000 on social services to help. And I think that's very illuminating where priorities are as the city is to brutalize and harass people rather than helping people and promoting health, all bound, all around health for folks. That's it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Sally. And council discussion? Roll call, oh.
No, I, thanks. I was just going to say for the, you know, I think Jacqueline did a good job, but for the public, this is a pretty routine thing that we do this time of year, every year, because as she said, so many of our revenues and expenditures don't match up with a fiscal year that ends on June 30th. A lot of our capital improvement projects flow from one fiscal year into another. So it's not adding money to the budget. It's really, it's not deleting. It's really just moving things from one year to the next that didn't get completed in the previous year is really the nuts and bolts of this.
Hearing nothing else. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11, TRC Preliminary Budget. This is a resolution approving the preliminary operational budget for the Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission that rounds from July of 2021 through December of 2021. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Mims, second. Weiner?
All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Oh.
Mayor, may I just do a brief introduction to this?
Sure.
This item has been deferred from your last couple of agendas late July and then your August 17th meeting as well. I just want to call your attention that at last Thursday's TRC meeting, and that, that happened after your packet went out, the commission forwarded a recommendation that the council approve a one-item budget. That would be a budget for the facilitator expense only, just under $200,000, and that their plan would be to return to you at a later date with the rest of the budget with the hopes that the facilitator, that they are hoping to engage could help them craft that budget proposal or redraft it before it comes back to you. So again, the, the recommendation from TRC last Thursday is for a one-item budget at this time, and that is the facilitator expense.
Thank you, Jeff.
So can we simply amend this motion to accept their recommendation?
Yes, I forgot to, I forgot to add that important piece. We have anticipated that that might come up, and so the city attorney is, is prepared to kind of walk you through a amended resolution if you want to go down that path.
Shall I, Mayor?
Yes, please.
So as Jeff said, anticipating that a little bit, the original resolution anticipated a more complete budget that ended with a title that says that runs from July of 2021 through December of 2021. It's my understanding, having had skimmed the proposal for the facilitator aspect of their budget, that, that will not end in December of this year. It would be a longer contract than that. So I would propose that if it meets with council's approval to just eliminate that last part of, of the sentence. last part of the sentence, and just have the title end with commission. Budget for the ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And I've prepared a kind of strike through that I'll give to you, Mr. Mayor, when you're done, along with a clean version, but I thought I would read through for the benefit of the other council members first. The other suggestions I had was in the third whereas clause, to talk or to add approved the attached itemized budget proposal for a facilitator, and eliminating this preliminary budget submission, and referencing its meeting on September 2nd, in making it by a vote of seven to one, which is what the vote was on Thursday, instead of eight to zero, which is what it was originally. Finally, on the now there for language, having it approve the itemized budget proposal instead of preliminary budget for the ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission attached here too, and again, striking that language about running from July of 2021 through December of 2021. And to be clear, it's my understanding that the intention of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission was to get council's approval for the facilitator at tonight's meeting, and then if they receive that, then negotiate the contract with the facilitator, and if they're able to do that, bring it back to council, because that will require council's approval, and then utilize the facilitator to assist them in filling out the remainder of their budget, and then come back at a later date to present that to you, and then of course, moving forward with the remainder of their work. Want to, Mr. Mayor, I give you these two versions, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you folks may have.
Any questions on this part before we?
Yes, my question is. Are we, you know, I get confused now, my question is, are we approving the budget or the specific facilitator? Are we approving the budget for facilitator to be like 190, almost 200,000, or, and that the budget, and maybe, or we are approving the specific facilitator?
No, not approving the specific facilitator, just budget authority for that one line item for their budget, in just under 198,000. They can't move forward and negotiate, or at least approve certainly a contract unless they have the budgetary authority to do that. I assume that that's why they submitted just this one line item at their meeting, and not the whole budget, because again, I think they wanted the assistance of the facilitator in kind of determining what the remainder of their budget should be. So you are not approving this, the proposed vendor, the consultant at this point, that will come before you at a subsequent meeting. I don't know if they'll be able to do that as quickly as next meeting, that might require a little more time, that kind of depends on how those discussions go, but that will come to you at a later meeting.
Okay. Yes, you make it clear, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for staff?
I'd like to amend the resolution as described by the city attorney.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Weiner. All, roll call, please.
Weiner?
I'm sorry, we're, we haven't even done public yet.
Public, sorry.
That's just amending.
We just amended it, sorry about that.
They not approve the everything, yeah?
Yes. So now we're going to have public discussion unless there's more, we'll come back to council discussion. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes. Yep, welcome. I don't know if you signed your name, but at the end you can sign your, thank you.
And I, and I did for the first half hour, but it seemed to me that it was more important for all of them to speak. It was very powerful to hear all of them at once. And so I'm Annie Tucker, and I live at 91 Prairie Hill Lane in 52246 Iowa City. Can you hear me? I just have this thing, we can't hear each other with masks, maybe it's just me. Great, thanks, good to see you. So I first, I first want to thank you for having the courage to take a stand against systemic inequity by founding the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I've been to their meetings multiple times, I was there the night that the then leadership was voted down, and that was a hard meeting, it was a very long and hard meeting. I've been to at least four or five or more of their meetings over the summer, and including the last two meetings which were face to face. And the thing, I'll tell you that I, I go to those meetings because I think the issues are essential to be dealt with at this time in this country, but also in this community, right? We all have some privilege that other people don't have, and how will we level the playing field? One way we'll do it is by hearing from people, like we did tonight, people telling their stories. And so that's part of the job of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and to me, another reason I go is because I see how they handle and deliberate on issues. They listen, they're very intentional. They actually, people on the commission will have opposing views, and they just hear that, and the conversation goes on, and often that concern is integrated into the thinking. They're very respectful of the people who come to them, like when they had the folks, a lot of folks excluded workers that were brought to them in a Zoom meeting by the Catholic Worker House. It was a really moving conversation, their interaction with them and each other about those issues. So if you want, if you haven't been to one of their meetings, I really encourage you to go, because they are doing some very powerful work that is really critical, and you guys set that in motion. So that courage, it's tough courage, but I encourage you to bring that to everything you're thinking about, because how will things shift? You know, it's not the easiest shift to take in this time in, in the world, but you're, this shift is yours, and I feel like you've done a good job, and the consultants they've chosen, I listened to the, to the interview, and I find them really remarkable, remarkable experience, thanks. I could go on, but I won't.
Thank you.
Because I can't.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
Obviously, the RFP for this particular group especially came back a little higher than what we expected would, would be the cost for this, but it's been obvious, I think, from the beginning, already a year ago now, last September, that this group has needed help with direction and clarity, and I think it would be well worth the cost of any group that could help them out, and this group seems to have experience and qualifications that could help them move forward in achieving their goals, and have some strategic direction in achieving that, and I think expedite it as soon as we can, so that they can get, get
I agree, and I think while we're not approving a particular contract with the vendor this evening, having had the opportunity to watch the meeting and the presentation from Kearns and West, it's really inspiring to imagine the level of expertise that could bring if we're able to engage that firm to assist our TRC, bringing national and international expertise in conflict resolution and truth and reconciliation, that I just think building that capacity in Iowa City through this city commission is a tremendous, tremendous opportunity. And I know I've spoken with a couple of you, but I again want to note that in our budget amendment just now, we carried forward that million dollars that we committed to allocate towards Black Lives Matter and related efforts to address systemic racism in our community, and I think spending just under 200,000 on this is very, very well worth it.
Well, I, in reading the proposal, it certainly addressed many of the comments and concerns that I'd expressed at our previous meetings. So I think it's, it's a very promising, very promising process that I see being considered there. I do hope that the team, that part of the negotiation might include local participation, you know, it's, it's not, there's, I hope we can incorporate more local participation in the team, if that's possible. I mean, I, I understand it's a, it's a kind of a unique set of skills that this consultant team brings to the, to the process. At the same time, it certainly would be helpful to have more local participation if that's, if that can be negotiated.
I think this is the, this is the group that I wish had pitched up six months ago. And if, in my view, if we want, if, if it's our goal for the TRC succeed, that they have the expertise and the, and the, and basically all the staffing that they really need for this to function well, with, with people who have done the equivalent of TRCs, not all around this country as well as around the world, this is, this is the money that we need to spend to get this done. And I believe that we, there are some Iowa City links, I believe we can help them create more. There are some people involved with this group who've been, who've known about the our TRC since its very inception, and so I, I will vote in favor of this.
Any other comments?
For me, I think, you know, as a black person, and as somebody who's really care about Black Lives Matter, as a community organizer, and who reach out to a lot of black in the community, and engage with a lot of minority, I just believe that for this, like, particular people to work from distance is not going to work. I'm not against, like, this amount of money is spending, even though as you said, it come like high than what, as like others said, it come like highs than what you expected for the facilitator, but I don't mind spending this amount of money, making sure the facilitator is local, who really engaging with our people. I don't know, maybe there is some work, they can do it from distance. I heard their interview from the beginning to the end. I don't think they really have, they know Iowa City, or they know the minority in Iowa City. I just have hard time imagining how those people will reach out to our black people. I know how our people need to be rich, they need somebody in person, they need somebody here, they need all these kinds of things. I'm not against the money, like 200,000 is nothing to spend to find, like for Black Lives Matter. But I really think working from distant, spending all this money outside, not locally, there is many firm here locally, they can do that. And I, I just believe that they didn't have the chance even to apply for this opportunity. That's why I have only one person, you know, one firm apply. I just believe, again, I don't mind spending that much, even more, but I want to make sure this is would do what we need out of this TRC. I just have hard time believing this firm, yes, they have experience, they have great things, the only connection they have is somebody who was in Iowa, like graduated from University of Iowa, and when that person has been asked what commission he did, like really join, is nothing in Iowa City. I understand that University of Iowa is really, like, a bar that we cannot, like, dispute that they are in Iowa City, but they still segregated from the community, because they are a student, most of them coming from far away and leave. But the, you know, the fact that also they have some, like, kind of groups who really taking care of, like, focusing Black Lives Matter at the university, but I don't hear Kyle said that he was part of those group one day, so I can say, oh, you have the connection. I just have hard time, like, really just believing those people will do that, because even though we're not approving us, like Burgess said, we're not approving the people right now, but everybody start talking about them, that's why I have to talk about it as I really torn, I don't know, I don't mind for the budget, but still, I, I think there is many, many project that the city will advertise it, and everybody will bet on it, like projects, and sometimes they don't like the bet, and they advertise it again. I really wish to see if we can, if the TRC can advertise it again, and maybe we're going to find people locally, or for this firm to just give them a specific task that they can do from far away. But part of this money have to go to something here locally, so, so we can see this, that's all I can say.
There's a lot of basic work that needs to be done for organization. I don't, I didn't expect that they were, they would themselves be doing, the ones doing the research, I expected that assuming that if they were hired in the end, and we approved their contract in the end, they would be, but that they would be the ones largely helping the current commission put together a work plan and all, and, and do all the other pieces of it that they don't have the expertise to do, not that they would be the ones specifically.
But that means we're going to spend additional money to the 200, because their, their proposal is 200,000, almost 200. That means this budget will be like even more, they will do their work from far, from distance for 200, but they will help hire another people to go around and do the work in the ground, which is, no, I, I just believe this is going to add to it, we're giving like 200,000 to spend, not locally, and, and we, we're going to hire people in addition. That means we're not talking about 200,000 for the facilit, we're talking about more maybe, if that's the case, if they're going to hire, unless they will say, oh, we're going to hire certain local firm, where they will do the job in the ground with the same budget, that's something else. But I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure with, I'm not sure that I understand why that would be the case. Because what I read in the proposal is essentially reorganizing the TRC, so that they would have a different kind of schedule, so that they have, so that they would be doing different, sort of different kinds of outreach, so they're, they're sort of, I mean, I hear, I definitely hear your concerns, but I, I don't, I personally don't see them as, as being, it's the, in the end, it's going to be the, the, the much better organized TRC itself that would be doing most, most of the outreach, but I, you know, I'm going to have to leave in a minute, I should have left 20 minutes ago.
Oh, sorry. I, what, so I think people do know I have challenges with our current TRC, and I want to make sure that I at least articulate to a certain degree what those challenges are. I think ultimately, this whole opportunity that we have is to make sure that we end systemic racism within our community. And right now, we have people within the BIPOC community, specifically the black community where there's division. I won't go into all of that tonight, but that does grieve me. So when I, when I see this budget, I, I see the basic And I think as we are, you know, continuing to relearn how we give direction to the TRC or help them along in the process, I also feel like right now is an opportunity. And I know we want urgency, we want, you know, to move, you know, as quick as possible to get to some of the work within the TRC. And I understand this might be for some backpedaling, but I, the unification and the, just the basic of bringing people together is super important for me. What I will say is, you know, this isn't, you know, approving the vendor is not, you know, if it's not approving the vendor, then at least for me, what I would say is, if this council would consider, I don't know that this amount of money, I think we all agree with this amount of money, and whether we say yes to this amount of money or not, I would like for this council to consider if we ask for, you know, different proposals from the community to come forth. We, this went out and we had one applicant. We have very highly skilled individuals within this community that I know can be a part of this process. We still have outside of this 197, a lot of work, which if it goes up, if we have to spend the whole million on people being a part of this, and that seems like the right thing to do, then this council ultimately will be asked to make that judgment call or asked to vote on that. But I do believe that in hopes of, you know, garnering more unification within our community, opportunity for, and I know this may not, you know, bring for some thoughts that, you know, we are in, I guess we're kind of, or backpedaling or whatever, but I would, I would really like council to consider if, if this was approved, we just give some direction that there is at least another opportunity to have other people apply. But I think the 197 is, I mean, there is more cost to this, and that, and that's, you know, we'll be able to vote on that when it comes before us. But I really believe that we need to, and I said this before, kind of just reimagine some, something with this TRC. The unification is a, is a major issue for me, and the continuation of this council being seen in a negative light, and I understand, we've been here long enough to know that we're not always going to be judged by our character or our intentions, and that's okay. I, I mean, it's a part of the role, I'm used to it now. But I just believe that this should not, I don't know, I feel like we, we really should open it up for more people to come and apply. And I'll leave it at that.
Are you gonna say something to us?
I don't know what else to say at this point, because the, to me, the question is, do we want this to succeed or not at this point? If we want it to succeed, they need to have really, they have, they need to have robust support, which Stephanie Bowers has worked really hard, but she, as one person without, without having run a TRC before, is simply not the, the level of support that an organization like this needs. I, I fully believe they would reach out to other people. I believe that there's, isn't there a link with Aaron Page at the Human Right, at the Human Rights Center there as well? But they, we definitely have qualified people in the city. I'm just sort of, when I look at this, after all this time, after almost a year, I look and say, okay, we have an opportunity now for, for people with enormous, with enormous experience, who can help, who can help reach out to whoever the people and help heal the rifts that you write, the Mr. Mayor, you rightly noted, exist, both on the commission and between the commission and various parts of the community in the city. And that needs to be a part of their remit if they were, if they were to be hired. But the, but sort of not allowing, giving them the ability to move forward. Anyway, to me, that's sort of the decision that we're making.
I don't think we are here not to give them the opportunity to move forward. You just said two important things, that you mentioned Aaron Page, you mentioned Stephanie, because you know them, and we believe one, we saw their work, we know that they, they're going to do good things, because they are local, we know them. And I think if that's what we want to see, I just, I don't know how, even if they come and just said, oh, this beautiful word and experience, and they have experience, somebody is still a the black person, as somebody who really have experience with how, like, black community and people of colors, how their community works when it come to this, I really think we need something local. I, as I said, I'm gonna say it again, I don't mind if they can give them some of the work, and some of the work will, like, some other work will be, like, certain work from distance and certain work for people locally. That's why I will encourage, I don't, I'm not against the budget itself, I'm just against, we need more people to be locally in the ground.
I would say, I think we've all known from June of last year, that we were going down a path that we felt was really important for this community and absolutely necessary for this community, and also very challenging for this community. I don't think it's unusual, what we're seeing in this community, that the black part of our community is not necessarily unified in how they look at things. I think to assume that they would be is, is really naive. I mean, you've got unique individuals in every segment of the community. I think we also identified, and if you look back at the history of the TRC since we started, some of the incredible challenges that they faced. And I think we've all identified the fact that they need assistance. You know, we've thrown, thrown together a group of people that don't necessarily have experience of running a commission. They were all new at the beginning, we ended up adding other new people afterwards. It wasn't like we do with our normal commissions, where you have a commission that's been in place and you add one or two new people at a time. It was just totally different, trying to get their feet on the ground and figure out how to work, move forward. As they have indicated in their, in their public comments and in their meetings with us, the work they are doing is very hard, and it is very different than a lot of other commissions. And so I think the assistance that they need is very specific to the work that they are doing. And they did an RFP, and we got one response, and they feel good about the response that they got and the conversations and interviews that they had. And so I am supportive of moving forward with this budget piece tonight. As has been mentioned several times, this is not the approval of the actual vendor. I don't know if we even legally could continue to accept other applicants at this point. I'm not sure what the details on that RFP said in terms of a deadline. But I think to stop this or move this or slow this down would just absolutely undermine any confidence that the TRC or the public has, that this council is actually serious about the TRC being successful. I agree that it will be helpful in certain aspects of this to have, definitely have people on the ground here doing work. And as I read through this and look at this, I think that will happen. And certainly as, as they are negotiating the details of the agreement, you know, staff can be looking at what they think as well, with that is essential and part of that agreement. So I am totally supportive of moving forward on this tonight, fully understanding that we will have another budget recommendation coming from the TRC, and we don't know right now how much that will be. I think part of that will be dictated by the actual agreement that is reached, if it is with this vendor, in terms of what they're doing and then what additional support would be outside. But for any lack of trust, disagreement between the TRC and the council or within the black community, this is what the TRC has brought us after an RFP and after a very robust presentation. And I feel that it's really important that we continue to move this forward and show some trust in the TRC. So I will be supporting this.
This is a very kind of unique process, and, you know, in the work that I did professionally, sometimes, you know, it's difficult to find any more than one, in this case, vendor who is capable of managing the project. But, so in that sense, I'm not surprised. But I do feel that what the, what the consultant will bring is a framework in which the community will provide the picture. So I, I'm, the community will come forward in this process through that framework. And in that sense, the community will be represented. It is our truth and reconciliation, that will be the picture. But what's been missing has been the framework in which that discussion could take place. So I do feel, it is, especially given the history thus far, that we do need to move forward. At least, I'm confident that it, its success depends on this decision. And I do feel in the end, the picture will be of the community that is provided through that framework, which is, which is why we, why we, why we wrote the ordinance and why we're pursuing a truth and reconciliation.
I agree with Councilor Thomas, and although I appreciate Mazza here's comments about utilizing local persons, I mean, we always talk shop local and utilize local people. This particular group, although we're not looking at hiring them as such, but an outside group, particularly this one, has experience in outreach and engagement, and I think as Councilor Thomas said, that will be to members of the community. And this group has the experience in actual truth and reconciliation commissions. And I don't know that we can say that there are that many individuals in the community as such that have that particular experience that would be necessary to help the TRC move forward from this point.
I'll make one last comment. I think we, and again, I know that we went forth with this with full intentions, and I still believe that the goals of the TRC is dead on, that's what we want to happen. On a lot of levels, we didn't, you know, begin with the end in mind. When, you know, the, this consultant, we kind of heard when we had the joint meeting with the commissioners, that it was more robust, it was a lot of services. And as I began to hear a lot of things coming from this, from the vendor, of what they potentially could do, that's, my mind went to, this really is the, somewhat of the framework that this council should have had, should, should have had in the beginning, or should have now, in just the whole makeup of the TRC, not saying that we would have selected them as a facilitator, but what all goes into a TRC? We didn't have that information, and I understand, you know, we're at this point now. But when I heard the presentation, my mind went to, still, this, you know, somewhat should be under, at the council, make sure that we have some, you know, thoughts and input as to, you know, what does a TRC mean? Because that's, that, I mean, that's what they're doing. What all, what all does it involve and entail? You know, when I looked at all of the outlined items that each one of the people a part of this team will be doing, it was overwhelming on one level, as far as what they were doing, but I'm not exactly sure, you know, if, if it is really consultant type work or if it's... I saw the presentation, I read the material, and I still don't have a full sense of what they can do. But I guess, you know, I'm going to, I'll leave it at that. And unification, we're not there, and I just find it hard to move forth with this type of, with this part of it. I know we're not approving the facilitator, but I really think that there's a lot of more work to be done, and moving forward with this is a little hard for me. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes, move, I will tell you.
I'm sorry, did you vote or are you still thinking?
Still pending.
Oh.
Anytime, you can move on, come last.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
I don't know if people really understand how difficult this is.
This is a time to vote, not to continue discussion.
Okay. I can take a minute if I desire. It is very hard, because you don't want to be furthering any type of disturbance. We want to make sure that we move forward as, as, as we can. I don't know. We're not approving the vendor. The 197, you know, for the work of reconciliation, I can approve the 197 if that's, if that's what we're doing, it's not approving the vendor. But, so I'll just say yes, I'll leave it at that.
Thomas?
Yes.
Sully?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, I apologize, but I need to leave. I needed to leave 40 minutes ago, but this was important enough to stay. Next time, please let's not schedule a meeting during a major Jewish holiday. Thank you.
Onto item number 12, Friendship Street Traffic Calming. Resolution authorizing the installation of speed humps on Friendship Street between Meadow Street and the bridge west of Upland Avenue. Could I get a motion to approve?
So move, Thomas.
Second.
This is a time to vote, not to continue the discussion.
Okay. I can take a minute if I desire. It is very hard, because you don't want to be furthering any type of disturbance. We want to make sure that we move forward as, as, as we can. I don't know. We're not approving the vendor. The 197, you know, for the work of reconciliation, I can approve the 197 if that's, if that's what we're doing, is not approving the vendor. But, so I'll just say yes, I'll leave it at that.
Thomas?
Yes.
Sully?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, I apologize, but I need to leave. I needed to leave 40 minutes ago, but this was important enough to stay. Next time, please let's not schedule a meeting during a major Jewish holiday.
Onto item number 12, Friendship Street Traffic Calming. Resolution authorizing the installation of speed humps on Friendship Street between Meadow Street and the bridge west of Upland Avenue. Could I get a motion to approve?
So move, Thomas.
Second. Burgess?
And we're going to have comments by staff. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. I have something I'm trying to pull up here, and I can see it, but you cannot. I'm not exactly sure why, but we can, I can talk through it. So before you this evening are the next three items. This, as well as the next two, are for traffic calming projects in and around the community, three different neighborhoods. It's been a little bit over a year, I believe, since we've talked about traffic calming, so I wanted to take just a quick minute to talk about what the policy is and how that works before we get into the resolutions themselves. First and foremost, the goal of the traffic calming program is to reduce excessive speeding and/or volumes. And participation in the program itself is initiated by the neighborhood and not imposed by the city. That's important to know. There's five steps in the process, and all three of the agenda items that you will consider have made it through all five steps. The first step is a petition for traffic calming. And to be valid, the petition must include signatures from no less than 50% of the households that would be affected. So on any given road segment from point A to point B, we've got to get a petition from 50% or more of those households to be valid. And to qualify, it needs to either be a local residential street or a collector street. The second step in the study, once we've received a valid petition, is for city staff to initiate a traffic study to measure the vehicle volumes and speeds over a 72-hour period. And we do that on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, because those are our typical traffic calming, or excuse me, our typical, our typical traffic days. If speeds and volumes meet the criteria for traffic calming, we then review the street section and propose a set of traffic calming measures that may be safely implemented. And we have that discussion with an internal traffic calming committee that we put together, and that has representatives from public works, engineering, police, fire, and transit, if necessary. The thresholds to qualify for the traffic calming program are as follows. Volumes need to exceed 500 vehicles a day on a local street, or 1,000 vehicles on a collector. And then what's more common is that the streets have a speed, an 85th percentile speed, that will be five mile per hour over the posted speed limit to qualify. So if it's posted at 25 as a residential street, you would then have to be at 30 mile per hour or more, in terms of 85th percentile speeds. We then move on to step three, which is a neighborhood meeting. We will review the traffic study with residents of the street and describe potential remedies, and those come out of the traffic calming committee that I prefaced. And the goal of the meeting is to determine whether to support for the neighborhood to pursue any of the measures that are proposed. So this is when the neighborhood has a chance to talk to staff, ask us questions about the program, the policy, or any of the remedies that we are proposing. It's also a good time for the neighborhood to learn what their neighbors think, which is, I find, a really important tool as part of the traffic calming process. The step, excuse me, step four is the neighborhood survey. And this is kind of the crux of the traffic calming program. If we find at the neighborhood meeting that the neighborhood wants to move forward, we then send out a mail-back survey card to each household along the affected section. And then to be, to be, to get to this point, you have to have a 50% response rate. And then of the 50% of folks that respond, you have to have a 60% approval rate. And if you don't meet those thresholds, then staff does not put it on agenda for your consideration. And then the last step, of course, is what we're doing this evening, and City Council has the final say on whether or not we move forward with the, the projects that are proposed. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have thus far, just about the program.
Here are no questions. Thank you. All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come to the podium. There is a sign-in sheet on the side, and we ask that you give your name and your address. And you can sign after you've finished speaking, if that's okay. Welcome.
Thank you very much. First of all, just as a point of procedure, you know, with four or five men and six, seven women here, it's hard to tell when somebody is actually speaking. Some of your voices modulate the same. It probably would be good if you raised your hand to indicate which, which counselor or manager were speaking, because it's confusing. Also, speaking up is really important. Some of you, like John, has a very quiet manner. With the mask on, it's, it's really hard. So this is, this is just for, for future. Anyway, regarding this issue, traffic calming, traffic would really be a lot more calm if the city did other things that were broader, so they wouldn't have to do nitpicky things like traffic calming. By that, I mean that you could increase the size and the number of bicycle lanes. You could discourage traffic by creating other space. Take, for instance, a two-lane, one-way street. If one lane were bicycle traffic, and the other lane were car traffic, instead of the bicycle getting five or four feet or three feet, all areas would do better in traffic. So you wouldn't have these areas where traffic is naturally going to collect, because people find on these roads now that the only way to travel is, in fact, by using a car. It doesn't feel safe to bike. We are in a global situation where we cannot continue the way that we are continuing. We cannot make roads for transportation for cars. We're evaporating our, our atmosphere. So traffic in itself, by comparison, is not that important, whether or not there's 1,000 cars or 900 cars. This is very incremental. This is just looking for tiny things. But we can do a lot better by all the neighborhoods, and also by people who are working class, poor, even middle-class, who want to ride the bicycles, who don't want to get in a Creating a situation where there is less traffic by providing less places for cars to drive, more places for people to bike or walk, this is the solution. Thank you so much for all the good works that you folks are doing.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? And will you please sign in? Brendan? Thank you.
Point of clarification, are we talking about traffic calming in general terms that the gentleman just presented on? Or are we talking about the specific situations that are listed on the agenda?
It, it is what's on the agenda, Friendship Street Traffic Calming.
I'll wait my turn then.
Welcome. And I want to make sure that at least I address that this is the only item on here, unless you're talking about, like, Duck Creek? Is that the one you're? Okay.
There's also Kenneth Drive coming up as well.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Karen Reitz, and I live on, at 948 Duck Creek Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You're for Duck, Duck Creek Drive?
Yes.
Yep, that's the next agenda item. Anyone else want to speak on Friendship Street Traffic Calming? Welcome.
Hello, I'm Noah. I also, I kind, I agree with the last speaker on that, you know, having more pedestrian, bicycle-friendly streets, and having like an actually decent public transportation system would also help, so less people need cars, people able to walk. And having affordable housing centered downtown for folks, so more people can walk there, too. That would be nice. And on the calming, stop having cops enforce traffic laws. That's how people get harmed, brutalized, killed, what have you. So stop them from doing that. We all need armed agents of the state enforcing traffic laws. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Friendship Street calming, traffic calming?
Yeah, thank you. Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. Good. I just wanted to mention that the resolution is to authorize the installation of speed humps on Friendship Street between Meadow Street and the bridge west of Upland. The residents of Friendship Street have successfully completed the steps that I outlined previously. And on July 7, the survey was sent to the residents of Friendship Street in order to measure support for the proposed speed humps. And in all, just a little bit over 60% of the
This council should
The designated section of Friendship Street did respond. And of those households that responded, about 82, 82.6% indicated support. So they did meet the thresholds necessary.
Thank you.
Kent, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I should have asked you sooner. And, and this kind of relates to all three, but to me, it's also important on this one, okay? Because I feel like we need some consistency tonight in what we do. And there were, I think, some members of the public against each of these three, or at least each of the first two.
Sure.
One of the things that we heard, I think, in a lot of the correspondence, was about our policy and procedures, how we do that, who we survey, the fact that we basically, I believe, only survey the people on the street. I mean, I heard this from people when we did Hickory Trail also, that lived like on Bluff Wood and some of those other side streets, that were frustrated that they didn't get an opportunity to have any input when they drive on those streets all the time, and in many cases have no choice, because they're a cul-de-sac off from that main street. So I guess, I guess I have a question to you in terms of, from your professional experience, do you think we should be looking at changing the way we do some of that? And potentially also engaging council in some of that discussion, maybe before we either vote, or would potentially defer any of these, so that we are consistent in that on all three? I would hate to, I'd hate to pass one of these, and then we go to another, and simply because it had more negative comments about it, we choose to defer that, when really the underlying reason for the deferral would potentially be the same for all of them. So that's kind of why I'm bringing it up at this point, rather than waiting till we get to a next one, so.
Yeah, so I'll be the first to say, you know, the process isn't perfect. No process is. But what we do is we post a real, like a real estate sign, like we do with planning and zoning matters and that sort of thing, in the right of way. And those have been up for about three weeks. So we actually notify the neighborhood that there'll be a city council meeting. And those signs stay up for anywhere between, you know, three weeks and five weeks, depending on how much time we have. So that is really, if the folks weren't involved in the neighborhood meeting or received a survey, they would have found out either through conversation with their neighborhood or from actually seeing those signs. So I guess to answer your question, I think if you are a regular on that street, whether you're riding your bike, walking, or driving, you would have seen the signs, and then that way you are fairly well notified. Again, it's not a, it's not a perfect system, but I think just by the way that folks wrote to you all, it is working, you know? Pro, pro and con.
Right. And I, I think the notification piece, like you say, with the number of public comments we've gotten, the, I guess the piece that I'm struggling with a bit is the actual process itself. You have brought to council a number of times over the year, I've been here 12 years, and we've reviewed and talked about this, and have either not changed at all, or made very minor tweaks to it. And, and I guess I'm interested in hearing what you have to say in council, is, is there a legitimate reason to potentially expand the group of people who actually get to respond, who've actually received the surveys and get to respond to those surveys? Right now, it is only the people on maybe a relatively short designated part of a street. So I just try to understand this a little better, to feel like I'm making a better decision for all involved.
If I, if I can jump in, because we have, it seems like every couple of years, we review the traffic calming guidelines, and we do make some tweaks. And I think the, the distinction that's come up in the past is, the section of street that, that is the focus of the, of the speed humps is, is, the reason that they're surveyed and it's not a greater area is because they, they have a different impact, right? It's not just, I drive down this street, and thus I'm inconvenienced, or, you know, I guess, I guess just inconvenienced by the bumps, but maybe it's my kids play in the front yard, and there's, and they're speeding, or there's a crosswalk, you know, near my house, where I try to get to the park across the street. So generally, they, they experience the street differently than some of the feeder streets that might hit that. And that's why we focus it in, the survey, on that aspect. If you broaden it out to a bigger neighborhood, that would be fine. I would say you'll see far less successful applications at that point, because those that simply drive down that street and don't experience it as a pedestrian, or as a property owner, renter, are going to have much different views, and oftentimes not going to be supportive. So it would make it much more difficult to expand that area.
Yeah, Jeff's exactly right. And that's been the conversation we've had for years, is just, is it, is it, is it fair to survey folks that aren't being affected by those speeds? You know, it's always, we always think of as if, you know, you have your kids, your family in the front yard, and you're the one that's experiencing, you know, that, those excessive speeds, and it affects your quality of life. Should the neighbors down the street that may be the ones that are actually speeding get that same vote? So that's been the conversation in the past.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think unfortunately, there's a perception that this is simply about speeds, and that's the measure that we're looking at. But it, it has an impact on, you know, as Kent was just saying, the quality of life of those who actually live on that street. The sound levels go up, the higher the speeds, the use of the front yard space is impacted as the speeds go up. So there, there are all kinds of, of things triggered by higher speeds that really impact the people living right along that street, more so than people who just simply use it to get out of the neighborhood.
I'd just like to say that I think that there are many, many streets in Iowa City that have speeders. And I do have concerns with the line of thinking that only the persons on that street are affected, because I think there's that domino effect. I think the neighboring streets should be surveyed on this, because what's going to possibly happen, and we heard in some of our letters that we got, was that they're going to get traffic diverted through their streets. So they are, in the long run, going to be affected by it. And I think that is a concern. I think it would be a good practice to include residents. It wouldn't need to be the entire, apparently, street, but maybe at least their first block or so that neighbors that street, because they are affected in the long run. And, and so I think it would be a good, good practice to hear from them also, because they are also affected. But the other thing I wanted to mention was, and I think this was in some of our emails, too, that couldn't we look at some maybe other methods? I know the speed limit flashing light on Dubuque Street seems to have been very effective, and maybe is less expensive than putting these speed humps in every, so often, every block or so. And couldn't we look at that as an option first?
I guess when I ask you, you mentioned something about threshold for the Friendship Street. Did you say you met the threshold, or you did not? I, I didn't get that.
Yes, they met all the required thresholds, that's correct.
Okay.
And it, it wouldn't be in front of us tonight if they hadn't, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, staff doesn't make judgments on these. If they meet the thresholds, then they will come before council. That's right. Yeah, it's very black and white for us. And in fact, we have had some, we have had some in the past that will come in at a tenth below, you know, the required threshold. So if the response rate has to be 50%, and it comes back at 49.5, we, we won't bring it to, to council, just because, you know, where do you stop? Just one of those things, where you have to just kind of draw that line and, and make that judgment.
And Jeff, when did you need this buy? Like, is this something arrogant?
No, I mean, if, if you needed more time, or you wanted to deliberate more, you can defer it. What we typically do is try to group a few of these together before we go out and we bid the project, so we don't bid these individually. And Kent, I don't know where things stand on the next bid, would this be the next group to be bid out?
Right. So, so that's why we're bringing two, three of these tonight, and that's not unusual for us to kind of package these up, bring them to you. Assuming they pass, then the engineering group can actually put those all out for bid at the same time, and try and get those in the next construction season, is kind of the timeline.
Do you think if we, if you reach out to the neighborhood, if we defer it, and we reach out to the neighborhood and see, like, if they respond, this is going to take, like, really from the, the line that you wanted by, or you can still do that?
You know, I think, I think, like Jeff mentioned, I don't think there's a, a real urgency to this. I think in the next couple, two or three months would be good, just so we can make sure we meet our timelines in the spring. But I, I will say that I think if you open it up to the larger neighborhood, this is just my opinion, but I would say that the vast majority of these would fail. It's not unusual that most of the negative comments actually come from folks that don't live on the affected portion of the street. And I think that's just And I think that's just, I think that's just the way it's been.
I don't know how you do this, but can we do like, I don't know, but can we do something like giving more point to the neighborhood and the people who live in the street? And less point on that, and just try to make the percentage of the, I don't know, but something like that, like, if there is a way we can gain the system? I don't know, is also, this is, we have first to king, the way that we conduct this, or do this first, and after that, we can start doing again, or, or this is, we can just defer it and ask in the neighborhood?
I mean, to me, we either change, we either, if we're going to defer it, then it would be to us, I would think, have a discussion with staff about how we change the process. To me, we can't just go out and start arbitrarily interviewing or getting surveys from other people if we haven't actually changed the process. Otherwise, we're not being fair to people across the community. So I'm, I'm, just wanted to raise that, because we had so many people on the Duck Creek one. I, I would have one other question, and that is, the picture that was in here, speed humps versus speed bumps, are most of the speed humps that are put in now, do not go across the entire street? They are, I don't know, this is like 10 to 12 feet wide or something?
Right.
Because they're very different, what's on, what's on Kimball Road, I think are old ones, that I think maybe are wider and higher and kind of steeper, if you will, versus the ones that are on, as you go east on Jefferson and then continued, is Glendale?
Glendale, yep, correct.
Those are very different.
Yeah. So, so we prefer the kind that stretch all the way across the street. However, we put in what we call modified speed humps, and all three of these that will come before you tonight are, would be the modified sort. And those are like the ones on Glendale. And there's actually a photo of it in your, in your packet. The reason for that is, when we meet with our traffic calming committee, our internal committee, the fire department, if they believe they have emergency access issues, or it doesn't quite, they have difficulty basically reaching that neighborhood, they will ask us to use the modified speed humps because of the stance of their vehicles is wide enough that they can essentially pass over them more or less unfettered, where a private vehicle cannot, because your wheelbase is shorter, so you actually hit the, the hump itself. So, so these would be the modified sort. We would really only like to use these in cases where the fire department says, you know, it's one of the harder neighborhoods to access, or it's further from the fire station, and so on.
And I would say for me, having, I drive over the Kimball ones fairly often, and you slow down to about 10 miles an hour to go over those. And I just happened to be on Glendale this past weekend, and driving over those and noticing that significant difference.
Yeah.
But still, in my car, I wouldn't go much over 25 to 27 miles an hour going over those. So the speed limit's 25. I'm not going to be going 30, 35 miles an hour over those. I mean, and I was just over those this weekend. So that also makes me feel better about going ahead with this now, is that these would be the modified ones, in that I think they're going to slow people down, but when people talk about having to, that it really disrupts their, their travel, I don't think these modified ones do.
Yeah, so there's a couple, that's a good point. And the, the goal of the speed humps, or modified speed humps in this case, is not to get you down to 10 or 15 mile an hour. We do the best we can, you know, when they construct these, they're actually rolling asphalt with whatever tools they can. So it's very difficult to get them right. But they all, you know, at the end of the day, they all meet the specified requirements from the engineering group. But, yeah, they're not all equal. But the goal is never to get speeds down to 10 or 15 mile an hour. The goal is to take that, basically those really high speeds off the 85th percentile speed. And if you look in some of the materials for these projects tonight, I mean, some of the 85, the 85th percentile speeds were upwards of 35, 40 mile an hour. So I mean, we, we're not trying to get folks to go really slow through the neighborhood, we're just trying to knock off sort of the worst offenders and bring it down to a reasonable, a reasonable speed.
I, I have a question for you. Normally, the, those speed humps would be like decided by the city to put them on the street, or the neighbor requested because of certain reason?
I missed the first part, I'm sorry, Mazir.
Like, the city will decide to put a speed hump in any street that they want, or the neighbor will request to the city to ask them to put a speed hump?
It's the, it's the latter, yeah. We, we never go out and look for these, these are all neighborhood-driven processes. And typically, the way it works is someone will call the city, they will call our office and say, "Hey, we have a speeding issue on our street." And Sarah Walls, who's also here tonight, she does the heavy lifting on the program, and she will say, "Well, let's see, you know, if you're on a residential street or a collector street, you could participate in the program." They go out and get that petition, and then if they get their petition, that starts the, the rest of those steps that we outlined earlier.
I think, you know, neighbor when they come out to ask for something, because they really think this is dangerous, maybe for their kids, maybe if there is a lot of kids around the area, or something. That's why I just believe that, you know, yeah, doing a survey for other people, like the, the large neighbors, like, neighboring's community is, they are not, they don't live there, they don't see the issue, they don't see like this is really dangerous for them or not, they just want to drive by that area. But the people who live there, I think the people who are supposed to make the decision about, maybe they have a lot of children around that area, and they're crossing the street normally, or something like that, and they want to just make this dangerous situations less dangerous for them. I, I still think the neighbor's supposed to have the big voice on this issue.
Any more questions for Kent? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I wanted to make sure there was no one else from the public that wanted to address this topic. Welcome.
We're still just on Friendship.
Yes, we're still just on Friendship.
Sorry.
Okay, all right.
Broad.
Seeing no one out there, I know council has deliberated here and there with questions to staff, so we'll continue that council discussion.
I just believe this is, if this has been requested by the neighbor, and the neighbor wants this because of certain issues in that neighborhood, I think I will vote yes for it.
Yeah, I, I will be supporting it as well. One other aspect of speed that, you know, is not indicated in the report would be, you know, the chances of someone being hit, if someone were a child, say, to run out into the street and be hit at 30 miles per hour, the chances of that child living is about 50/50. If, and then as you, as the speed increase, say to 40 miles per hour, the chances of that child being killed go up to nine out of 10. So there's a very significant, the, these speeds, you know, are, are, these numbers actually translate to matters of serious injury or death. And, you know, that fortunately, those things are infrequent, but, but the reality is, is that there are consequences to these higher speeds. It's kind of a spectrum from, you know, just the, the annoyance and disruption that can be caused by it, and in some cases, serious injury and death.
I think the other important thing is that these are the modified speed humps, not the speed bumps. And I drive on Sandusky pretty often, where there's the, the lower speed humps. And you can maintain a 25 mile an hour speed. I bike it, I drive it, I ride the bus over it, and it's not disruptive. It really is just bringing down that, that higher speed. So I'm grateful to the comments about the first responders as well, that we make sure we're addressing that. And I think if you're not accelerating and decelerating, but you're maintaining a speed, that also addresses some of the climate concerns that were provided by comments from the public to us as well.
I'll just add one comment, and it, it doesn't change my, my vote on this, but, you know, I've spoken about the notion of self-regulating streets. I would much prefer we look at our designs and see if we can't come up with a design where the desired speed, which is 25 miles per hour, would, would take place without having to come in afterwards and install speed humps. So that would be my goal. I would love to see us revisit, you know, our way, the way in which we design our streets, so this is more looking forward to new streets, so that we don't have to go back in at some later date and install speed humps, or some other, some other remedy which would reduce the speed. Or if, if we, perhaps it's incorporating some of those traffic calming elements in the original design. But the speed humps are my least favorite approach. It's really, and we, we do them because they're, in part, because they're affordable, relative to some of the other improvements. So that would be my, my suggestion is, you know, in terms of future development, to see if we can't come up with a street design that would avoid this situation.
Which we all, we have done. I mean, in Tamarack, we put in a couple of circle, traffic circles, small traffic circles, because that happened to be a long block there that wasn't, there wasn't really any real way to make it a shorter block. These are older streets that have longer blocks, which is not what staff recommends these days. So I mean, I think that was a specific, a very clear example of Tamarack, where we were proactive on trying to do a design change, so that hopefully we would never have to go in with humps there.
That certainly helps at the intersection.
Yeah.
You know, it, it, it's through the block length that could also be considered.
All right, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So move, Mims.
Second, Slaughter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item number 13, Duck Creek Drive Traffic Calming. Resolution authorizing the installation of speed humps on Duck Creek Drive between Duck Creek Place and the trail at Hunter's Run Park. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Move by Sully, seconded by Mims. And welcome again.
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, the residents of Duck Creek Drive have successfully completed the same city, the same steps that we outlined in the last agenda item for the Iowa City Traffic Calming Program. Back in early July, a survey was sent to residents of the neighborhood in order to measure support for the proposed modified speed humps. In all, just under 80% of the occupied residences along the portion of Duck Creek Drive responded to the survey, and of those households that responded, 73.9% indicated support. So just as the last agenda item, they met all the required thresholds, and again, made it through all the steps necessary.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please take the podium, and then after you're done, you can sign in back there.
Okay, I did, thank you. My name is Karen Reitz. I missed the party. I live one house away from those that were included in the neighborhood meeting.
Can you give us your address, please?
I live at 948 Duck Creek Drive, which is the first residence after Hunter's Run Park. And so I speak for those who live on the remainder of the block of Duck Creek and the three cul-de-sacs off of Duck Creek, the, the only way to, to access, to get out of their, their home would be to come on Duck Creek Drive. There are, I'm understanding from Mr. Ralston and Ms. Walls that, that you have to draw a line on who you invite to comment. But if Ms. Mims and Ms. Taylor lived, if, if they are the people that lived on the portion that was invited to be part of the survey, and 75 or 85% of them said, got to participate, and all of you all the way to Mr. Goers had to drive on, on the speed humps that were selected and voted on by Ms. Mims and Ms. Ta, Ms. Councilperson Taylor, then that, that would be a concern to me. And I'm hearing Mr. Ralston state that you have to draw the line somewhere, and the quality of life and the, the danger of being able to be in your front yard really affects those in the, in the area. And that if we were to have a larger group included, that these resolutions would never pass. I think I'd like the council to take a look at that. Why wouldn't they pass? One of the people that lives in the area of Duck Creek that is not in favor of this said, "Well, where I'm from, we just train our children not to go there. My children are three and four, and they don't go in the street." How many of you, since you sat down here tonight, have thought that the ceiling might fall down on you? It could, it absolutely could. So the problem that is being addressed, these limited tools to address speeding, is to address complaints but not collisions. There have been three collisions, not on the section of Duck Creek where the speed humps are being placed. And Ms. Walls, in correspondence with me, said that speed humps are to address speeding, not safety. So I would like, my request to the council is to ask to defer the, to defer the vote on the speed humps on Duck Creek until a larger percentage of those that have property on Duck Creek can be included in the, in the neighborhood meetings and have an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion?
I guess I have another question.
For Kent?
Yes, for Kent. Like, on Duck Street, how many people you send the survey, how many households did you send the survey to?
Let's see here, the survey was sent to 29 homes.
And how many you think on Duck Street that you exclude them because you have to draw the line somewhere?
Uh, I don't know, I don't know how to answer that question, because, again, Duck Creek Drive keeps winding sort of around towards the park, but then there's also any number of streets that, that come off of Duck Creek Drive. So again, it's, it's hard to know who we're excluding and who we're, who we're not. Sorry, that's not a good answer, but.
Yeah. I guess I'm not familiar with Duck, Duck Creek Street, that's why I'm asking this question, so.
So to be clear, the surveys went to the households that were in what will be the affected portion. That's the idea.
And, and those speed bump would be within between those 29 houses?
They will fall within that area, yes, correct.
Okay. But people that you never sent survey to, in front of the streets, there is no bump or anything, it's not going to be a place there, only on those area that you draw the line?
Correct. And, and I'm, I may be wrong, there may be a few houses that would have to cross these speed humps, but most of the households have other accesses out to, out of the neighborhood. So it, it may divert a little bit of traffic off of Duck Creek too, and we try not to divert traffic. But some of our, we always collect data pre and then post, of course, after the installations, and some of that diverted traffic might be 5 to 10%. So we're not seeing huge numbers, but there are other ways out of this neighborhood as well.
Sure. Thank you.
Kent, was, was the, so the, the study was done right up to Hunter's Run there, but it wasn't, you didn't consider the full length of Duck Creek Drive?
No, that's correct. Just between the trail that would take you into Hunter's Run Park, and then up to Duck Creek Place, which is just, just shy of River Road. Yep.
So you, you didn't get a petition from the rest of Duck Creek Drive, or you just, the speed, did you measure the speeds beyond?
No, we, we did not measure the speeds outside of this affected area.
Okay.
And the petition would have also come from this affected area. Yep. And it's not unusual, what we usually find, just to expand on this a little bit, is that streets that, like Duck Creek Drive, for instance, if this moves forward and the speed humps go in, what we most often find is later on, we might get another petition from a group that's down the street. And in fact, that happened on Friendship. So Friendship Street, which we just discussed, there's already a traffic calming installation speed humps further to the east. So more often than not, we actually get neighbors saying, "Hey, I want some of those too, how do we move forward?" So we actually come back and, and do that. It's not been the city's policy to expand on these without the neighborhood asking us. You know, it's very neighborhood-driven.
Any other questions for Kent? Thank you. Continuing council discussion.
Thank you.
Well, this one may set the record for the 85th percentile speeds on, on one of those segments, it's almost 50 miles an hour. Now, I, I, in looking at this, the topography is a factor, you can't read the topography, but I looked that up on GIS, and there is a, a slope on that section from Duck Creek Place down to Hunter's Run, so that contributes. So that contributes. You also have, this was, I think Sarah noted, a thirty-one-foot wide street, if I'm not mistaken. One, one of the issues that, that I've observed is that on many of these low-density residential streets, you, you have a street like this, thirty-one feet wide, if you have limited parking occurring on that street, you have, in effect, fifteen-foot lanes for, for your two-way traffic. And as a, there are references that I typically consider is that the lane widths on an interstate freeway are twelve feet. You can drive safely on an interstate at seventy miles an hour in a twelve-foot-wide lane. So it's, it's not, it's not surprising that if you could almost, you'll, you see cars going at the eighty-fifth percentile at fifty miles an hour when you have fifteen feet of lane, assuming, again, that there aren't many cars parked on the street. So that's a common condition that I've observed on many residential streets, is they're designed to accommodate street parking, but because it's so easy to, to park off-street, you end up with excessive lane width, and that promotes higher speeds. And that's, I think, what we're seeing here.
I don't see, this is really different from the other one. And if we really want to look at, like, more neighbors to be included, we should go, go ahead and maybe look at our policy that we have in place. But for the sake of this, I think this is done, using the procedure that we have right now in the city, and I will be supporting this.
Yeah, I think the procedure that we have in place now did what it, did what it was supposed to, and so I'll support it. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Sally.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item number fourteen, Kenneth Drive Traffic Calming. Resolution authorizing the installation of speed humps on Kenneth Drive between Court Street and Camden Road. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Sally.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Similar to your last two agenda items, residents of Kenneth Drive have also successfully completed the steps in the city of Iowa City's Traffic Calming Program. Back in early July, a survey was mailed to twenty-one households along the designated portion of Kenneth Drive, again, in order to measure support for the proposed modified speed humps. In all, sixty-one point nine percent of the households responded to the survey, and of those households that responded, sixty-one point five percent indicated support for the proposal.
Any questions for Kent? Thank you. We asked that the public come now, and you can sign that at the end. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. My name's Kevin Rau. I live at forty-one, forty-five Ruth Street, and like the lady that spoke before me, I'm one house away from the select group of people that got to provide input. But I'm, I'm a little confused about some of the findings and the statement that the majority of the people along Kenneth are, in fact, in favor of the speed humps. If I'm reading the correspondence correctly, a survey was sent to twenty-one people, of which eight responded affirmatively that they wanted the speed humps. In my math, eight out of twenty-one is not a majority of the people indicating a desire to have speed humps along Kenneth Drive. And I don't believe the failure to respond should be construed as a positive vote by the same token. In this situation, it appears to me that no one group has a majority vote within the group. Thirty-eight percent were in favor, twenty-four percent were against, and thirty-eight percent did not vote. To me, that's not a majority vote representing that. I'd also like to reiterate an earlier communication that I've shared with Sarah, and, and you have, I am trusting in your packets, that surveying twenty-one households representative of the area is not representative of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is bigger than the twenty-one houses that live along Kenneth Street. There are over a hundred houses in a neighborhood that I would call, between Kenneth, Charles, and Camden, is what I would call representative of the neighborhood, because those are the people that are going to be affected by the change in travel in and out along Kenneth Street. Whether they have to drive over the speed humps, or they change their path from their homes on a daily basis to get out of their homes to the neighborhood to avoid the speed I believe that if there is a need for traffic calming and speed humps are going to be a consideration, because all of the other suggestions we've submitted to the city have been politely declined, for lack of a better term, that other people's considerations should be taken in, other people's thoughts and ideas should be taken in consideration. I understand the city policy only requires that those households along the street directly affected be included in the survey, but I believe that policy is flawed. And I believe that the policy needs to be reviewed and needs to be revised in order to ensure equal representation and inclusivity and provide the opportunity for all parties impacted by decisions such as this...
Thank you.
...to vote on the solutions.
Thank you. We only have three minutes.
To continue to perpetuate a flawed policy...
Thank you.
...is an error.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? CNN one, council discussion.
I guess I want to make sure, Kent again, please. Yeah, you sent it to twenty-one household, sixty-one percent replied. That's what you're saying, right? And out of those sixty-one percent, you said how many, how much, what's the percentage of the people who said yes?
Yep. So, so in all, the survey was mailed to twenty-one households, and thirteen recert, thirteen responded, and that, and that's important to know, because then of the thirteen, eight indicated support. And that ends up with the sixty-one and a half percent approval rate.
Of the people who responded? Okay.
And so, and...
What's the threshold?
Sixty percent. Yeah. A fifty percent response rate, and then a sixty percent approval rate. Yep. And when, and when you get, and the gentleman's not incorrect, you know, at certain times, when some of these numbers get fairly small, right, the percentages change drastically. And that's one of the, one of the things about the policy.
Yeah, and the total is only twenty-one. Also, that's something, yeah, but I just lost my thought. Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Kent, in this one, how, and I guess it's true in all of them, how is it determined what segment of the street was going to be included?
Right. So what typically happens is, as I mentioned earlier, it's, it's a neighborhood-driven process. So what happens most often is a neighbor will call and say, we've got this issue. And they will say, here's our address, and, you know, I've got a couple of my neighbors that think the same way. I mean, that's kind of typically how these start. In this case, if you, so then we say, okay, what section of roadway are you, are you speaking of? In this case, for Kenneth, the section between Court and Camden is just sort of a nice clean break. That's one of the only east-west streets that's contiguous. So that's when we say, okay, well, if you're one house short of Camden, let's just get to Camden, right? So we look for natural breaks. With Duck Creek Drive, we sort of looked for that natural break in front of the park, and then for Friendship Street, it happened to be Meadow Street. So we typically look for some natural break, because, again, we don't try and extend these, you know, we don't try and impose this on the neighborhood. We just say, okay, we've got to have some neat and tidy area that we can survey. So, again, it's, it's not, it's an imperfect science, but we try to make a clean break. In recent memory, I don't remember ever saying, okay, well, let's just stop at this one particular lot line. You know, we try and find some natural break. And that's the way the, the actual traffic calming works, right? So whether it's speed humps or whatever, you know, we try and kind of handle that in segments. And then that's just the natural breaks in this case, is Camden down to Court.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I remember my question now. Yeah, you said that, yeah, you sent it to twenty-one, thirteen responded. Can you just tell me the time between you send the letter to them and the time you make a decision about this? How many days do you give them to respond?
We will typically give them no less than two weeks. Yeah. I mean, we try to give them three weeks to a month, if we can. Just kind of depends on when the city council meetings fall and, and when we can hold the neighborhood meeting. But always at least, very minimum, two to three weeks.
Yeah. Thank you, Kent. Yeah. I, I just think that twenty-one household, we sent it to twenty-one, give them two weeks, thirteen responded, eight did not respond, and I'm, maybe they don't just care if they have it or not. So I still, thirteen responded, thus will make it, you know, eight of them, they said yes, and sixty-one percent, I think.
So, this is Sarah Walls, transportation planner. So Kent is right about the timeframe we usually give. When it's over the summer like this was, we gave a full month for them to respond.
Oh.
Because we assume that people might be away. So they did have them for a full month.
Yeah. Good enough. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just want to acknowledge those who came and spoke, and thank you for letting us know your opinions, and all the people who wrote in. To Mayor Protem's point earlier of how do we kind of balance or weigh, is there a way to consider the people who live right in the impacted area versus others who are driving who might be inconvenienced? And I think that's why we have the public comment, that's why we have the opportunity to receive the emails and to have the timeframe for that to happen. So I hope that people understand that they are heard, even if we end up balancing it one way or the other. We're trying to provide that opportunity to give input, and it's up to us to then weigh or, or give weight to the feedback as we see appropriate.
I think this one was probably the one with the, the least, you know, speeds were not as high over the speed limits as on the other two. But nevertheless, they were over, they qualified. And I think the, the comment that has been made on the, the modified speed hump is a pretty benign hump. I mean, I, I drive the one on Glendale and Jefferson, and it, it really does seem to, assuming it does get the, the speeds down to twenty-five plus or minus, does so in a pretty gentle way. So I think it's, it's effective in that regard. But I, I did want to, given this opportunity, mention just one of the, the issues here beyond what we're considering is, is what are, what are we setting the speed by which we trigger these calm, calmings, these traffic calmings? And, and one of the, the things, and I, I haven't looked at this sort of subject matter in a while, but what we're seeing worldwide is that cities are reducing their speed limits. Portland is the best example in the United States. They've reclassified something like seventy percent of their residential streets to twenty miles per hour, because it's the safest speed for mixed-use people, children, bicycles, and so forth. Earlier this year, on a global scale, just saw this, this afternoon, at the sixth UN Global Road Safety Week celebration or acknowledgement, which was in May earlier this year, the, the UN advocated for that same speed, which is by kilometers measures, is thirty kilometers per hour. So that's the trend, is people, cities are saying, we need to reduce speeds from what they have been, to try to promote more range of, of mobility, walking and biking and so forth. So we're setting it at thirty. You know, we're, we're twenty miles per hour over that, what, what is now becoming more commonly used as a reference point in terms of what's a safe speed. But again, I, you know, I think, given the circumstances in which we're considering this, the, the effect is just to bring the speed back down to what it's supposed to be. And, and it does so in a, in a pretty benign way.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mims.
Second.
Burgess?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item number fifteen is announcement of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Climate Action Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by five PM Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, licensed electrician, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're at item number sixteen, which will ask for USG to give us some updates. Hello?
Hi, council and Iowa City community. We don't have any USG-specific updates, however, we wanted to speak on the recent events that happened within the Iowa City community. There, there is a trigger warning, because I'm going to mention sexual assault. In response to the reported violence committed by the University of Iowa Fraternity, Phi Gamma Delta, the University of Iowa Student Government is calling on University of Iowa leadership, as well as local leaders, such as you all, to act in response. Right now, students and community members need to see you, hear you, and, and understand that you care about them. The response displayed by our community last week is a result of an isolated incident, but rather a result of a systemic issue. Today, our community is hurting, but weeks from now, we cannot forget that there are students and community members who are hurting every day because of an experience like this one. Collective pain is one of the hardest things to endure as a community. However, it should be seen as an opportunity to reflect on what actions need to be taken to make our community stronger. As leaders of our institution, students expect and deserve transparency, accountability, and meaningful action.
We understand the complex nature and confidentiality of sexual misconduct procedures. However, we want to see city work with student government and the university to actively prevent violence from happening in our, in our community again. Comprehensive work to prevent future sexual assault cases, such as by committing Johnson County, to fully investigate this particular case, as well as provide further information on the current state of reporting and investigating of sexual assault in Iowa City. We encourage the city council to have a representative from Johnson County to speak on the delays of the survivors' case at the next city council meeting. We also wish to see partnerships with city bars and local hubs to provide resources in bathrooms and other public spaces that include a way to report sexual assault and city resources for immediate help, as well as partner with local organizations, such as RVAP and the WRAC, by providing direct monetary assistance to those organizations, as well as to engage with the communities affected by this, this systemic violence. At the next city council meeting, we would like to add time to the work session agenda in order to further discuss actions we must take and allow the community to speak on the issue. At the following city council meeting, the, these conversations can help us shape a resolution city council can pass regarding next steps to address sexual violence in our community. Together, we can change the culture of our institution and create, create a safer community for everyone. We look forward to working with you all in order to improve our city through the actions above. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all so much, and thank you for being here all day today, and, um, the subject matter, of, of course, is very, um, full of compassion, and so really appreciate you coming forth today. Item number 17 is city council information. Any information from anyone? All right. City staff, city manager, any updates?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Assistant city manager?
Nothing for me, thanks.
City attorney?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
And our city clerk?
Nothing for me.
All right.
I, I have something to say.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. To be honest, I really don't know, today's a Jewish holiday. Yes, from here, I wanna just congratulate them or wish them the best on this day. And I think we, as a council, need to look closely about those kind of event, especially we have really good diversity council members. So, um, I, I was really like heartbreaking for me to see like Giness going, uh, you know, she always really focused on making sure everybody holiday is really, you know, matter of, she asked me personally many time if that's okay with me, because she knew my holiday, I really felt sorry that I wasn't know about it today. But I think we, as a council and staff, uh, we need to really look closely before we make any meeting to look at our calendar and try to accommodate those people. I really don't like it when it's my holiday, I remember the school had back-to-school day and our Eid Day, which is all our kids like not gonna go to back-to-school. Yeah, it is really heartbreaking when you see, you know, we, we say that we are a diversity community and we accommodate everybody. Then let us really, I know this is not intentional by any means, but we need really to look into this more closely. Okay.
Anything else for the good of the cause? All right, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.